Call to June 11th, 2013 Longmont City Council Meeting to Order. This is a regular session. Could we please start with the roll call?
Yes, Mayor Coombs.
Present.
Councilmembers Bagley.
Here.
Finley.
Levison.
Here.
Samori.
Here.
Santos.
Here.
With.
Here.
Mayor Coombs, we have a call.
All right, let's stand for Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Anyone wishing to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard, will need to add his or her name to the list outside the council chambers. Only those on the list will be invited to speak at first call, publicly invited to be heard. Speakers who do not place their name on that list will have the opportunity to speak during the public hearing items this evening, or at final call, publicly invited to be heard. At the end of the meeting, or...yeah, okay. So, next we have the minutes from May 29th. Are there any corrections or additions to be made? Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor. There was just one correction that I wanted to note. I think that the speaker from Boulder County, Jeff Sayak, his last name was misspelled as Zach, Z-A-C-H, and it's Z-A-Y-A-C-H, I believe. That's the only correction I have. So, that was on the 21st. Okay, so I moved the minutes of the 21st with that correction, please.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Valerie, are there any agenda revisions or submissions of documents?
Yes, Mayor Coombs. We'd like to pull item 8E entirely from the agenda tonight, and then there were just a couple of documents that were delivered to you after the pack. It was sent out originally. That would be the Draft Planning and zoning commission minutes for item 9B, and Exhibit A for the city IGA for item 9E. Those were both on the web and also posted.
Okay, thank you. So, I guess we're...to the city manager, do you have anything to report?
No report, Mayor Council.
Okay. So, it sounded like the Skyline Kiwanis will present a donation to the city council for the 4th of July display.
Thank you. Hi, I'm Steve Conder with the Skyline Kiwanis Club, and with me tonight is O.J. Pratt from Pacific Auction, and Jeff McCusker from McCusker Electric, Dan Vaughn with Main Street Man.
Main Street Matt.
Dan.
That's all right.
Barry Surles, which I think a lot of you know, and Bill Stone with AG Edwards. So, we're here tonight to present $15,000 to the city of Longmont to help out with the fireworks, and so who do I give this to? Who can I trust? Who can I trust?
They look like they like each other, guys.
Thanks, Steve.
Thank you so much for the generous donation. I'm sure we'll all enjoy the fireworks. Now, we have a proclamation designating June 11th, 2013, as Callahan House Day in Longmont. Accepting the donation, a proclamation will be Candy Shy, a former chair and board member for the Callahan House Advisory Board, and whose great uncle was Jacob Shy drew up the warranty deed in 1938. So, the...I'll read the proclamation. A proclamation designated June 11th, 2013, as Callahan House Day in Longmont, Colorado, whereas on June 11th, 1938, the Thomas and Callahan family donated their Queen Anne home and gardens to the city of Longmont as a gathering place for community members to enjoy cultural, educational, and social activities, and whereas the city has presented and maintained the Callahan House since that time, so that all residents today and future generations to come can enjoy this unique piece of Longmont's history as a place to hold a special event such as a wedding or retirement celebration, as a venue for business meetings, or simply a place for people to enjoy the beautiful gardens surrounding the house, and whereas the Callahan House was designated as historic property by the city of Longmont in 1973, and by the National Register of Historic Properties in 1985, and whereas the Callahan House is used today by more than 15 clubs and hosts nearly 250 special events each year, and whereas the Callahan House will recognize 75 years of hospitality in the Longmont community on June 11th, 2013, and will celebrate the milestone on June 23rd, 2013. Now, therefore, I, Dennis Al Combs, Mayor, by the virtue of authority vested in me and the city council of the city of Longmont, do hereby proclaim June 11th, 2013, as Callahan House Day in Longmont, and I invite all citizens in the community to attend an ice cream social and open house at the historic Callahan House at the 312 Terry Street on Sunday, June 23rd, from 1:00 to 4:00 p.m., where proceeds from this event will help restore the 100-year-old fountain in the Callahan Gardens. So, is there someone here from the Callahan House Board that would like to come down and accept this? And you're free to pick up the mic and make any statements you'd like to make.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs and city council members. On behalf of the Callahan House Advisory Board, I'm honored to accept this proclamation. Personally, I'm even honored more. You did mention one of the relatives of my husband's, but I have a few now that were involved with the Callahans, and I just wanted to take this opportunity to kind of say that the Shys loved the Callahans so much because they were involved way back. My husband's great-grandparents actually were involved with the Callahans. Solomon Shy, who had a clothing store here in town, was actually Alice Callahan's bridge partner. They played duplicate bridge, and I hear that was pretty cutthroat with their bridge games. And Jacob Shy, as you mentioned, drew up the deed for the house to be given to the city. My husband's great aunt, Mel Shy, Jacob's wife, was appointed on the first board that governed the Callahan House, and my mother-in-law then served as a treasurer on the Callahan House for numerous years. And so, when I...before I retired, I said, "Uh-huh, I have to be on that board." So, that was the first thing I did on my little checklist after I retired. So, I've been on the board now nine years, and that was before term limits. So, this is my last year. I'll have to sit out for a while. On behalf of the advisory board and our manager, Kathy Corpola, we want to invite you again, reiterate that we'd like everyone here tonight, and the whole city of Longmont, to buy tickets to come to our ice cream social, June 23rd, 1:00 to 4:00 in the afternoon. We are selling the tickets for $15 each. $10 goes towards that fountain to repair it. We have...not only can you make ice cream floats and sundaes, but we have a barbershop quartet coming. We have a 1913 Stutz Bearcat car, one of only 12 to 15 that exists in the world, that'll be on display. Vintage photographers will be there to take pictures of people in costumes. We have tours of the house and the gardens going on, and who knows what else we'll come up with in the next two weeks, week and a half. Tickets can be purchased at Ace Hydrar, Express It, Fabulous Finds, the Senior Center, and here at the city offices. We also have tickets with us, so we'll be glad to sell them. Again, thank you very, very much. We appreciate the proclamation, and we want to see all of you at our celebration. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
So, come on up.
Since you've got a ticket with you, I'll buy one.
You're killing us with those. Those of us have plastic.
I was so excited about my ticket.
Mayor Coombs, the next item is a presentation of the Government Finance Officers Association's Certificate of Four Achievement for Excellence in Financial Reporting Award for 2011, Comprehensive Annual Financial Report, and Jim Golden is here to introduce this.
Mayor Coombs, members of council, I'm Jim Golden, Director of Finance. You just heard what this agenda item is, and this is the 32nd consecutive year that the city of Longmont has achieved this award. It's for excellence in financial reporting. Pretty much means that we are meeting all the government accounting standards that are set for governments to prepare their financial reports by. You've heard about it before. I think it's things that are important about it. We just went to market and sold bonds, and it really does help us out when we go out and get our bond ratings, and as well, I think it provides some assurance to the public about the credibility of your financial reporting. I wanted to just highlight one thing. Tonight, in the next item, you'll be accepting, hopefully, the 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This award is for 2011, but I do want to point out, today, actually, we had this morning, was informal kickoff for what is our HATS project, which is the Human Resources and Accounting Technology Solution, which we have been really working on for about a year and a half now, but we're kicking off the implementation stage. And that's really kind of taken up a lot of the time for the accounting division, as well as staff in other areas, but, you know, I wanted to highlight the fact that Molly Costalecki, our Assistant Finance Director, has really been balancing that HATS project, as well as these CAFRs the last two years, and she's just done an incredible job with the rest of the accounting division of preparing these CAFRs and getting them out on time, and preparing them to the standards that are required. So, we wanted to recognize that tonight. I have the plaque here for...to present to the mayor for the city's award, and I think he has there a certificate for the accounting division for the city for their achievement for the 2011 award. So, maybe I can ask Molly to come on up here, and we can have a photo op with the mayor.
One more?
Mayor Coombs, you're next citing this presentation of the city of Longmont Comprehensive Annual Financial Report and Independent Audit for 2012, and Molly Costalecki will introduce this item.
All right, Valerie, you're ready.
All right. Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Again, my name is Molly Costalecki. I'm the Assistant Finance Director with the city, and tonight, it's my pleasure to present to you the 2012 Comprehensive Annual Financial Report. This is what it looks like printed. You all haven't seen this yet, as you just have the electronic version, but we do have several printed copies now. I will give you a brief overview of some information you can find in the CAFR, and then I'll turn it over to your auditor here in just a minute. The CAFR is really prepared to demonstrate and ensure both fiscal and operational accountability with fund-based reporting for fiscal accountability and government-wide financial statements for operational accountability. And in the CAFR, you'll find four sections. There's an introductory section, which provides the table of contents, of course, and a letter of transmittal. The next section in the CAFR is a financial section, which includes a management discussion and analysis, the actual financial statements, and the notes to those financial statements. The next section is a statistical section, which provides various statistical tables of financial information, as well as other operational information. And the final section of the CAFR is the compliance section, which provides information about the city's federal grant awards and expenditures. I just wanted to point out that during 2012, the city implemented two new accounting standards and statements issued by the Government Accounting Standards Board. The first statement was Gadsby Statement 63, Financial Reporting for Deferred The first statement was GASB Statement 63, Financial Reporting for Deferred Outflows of Resources, Deferred Inflows of Resources, and Net Position. And basically this statement really did this year only change the name of the statement of Statement of Net Assets to the Statement of Net Position. There'll be more to come on those deferred outflows and inflows in 2013. And then additionally, the city implemented the guidance in GASB Statement 63, which was an omnibus financial reporting, statements are combined, a bunch of financial reporting items together. And during our analysis of the statement, we determined that the city's interest in the Platte River Power Authority was actually a residual equity interest and therefore should not be recorded on the city's financial statements. Really, this change only is representative of our financial reporting of this interest and in no way changes the relationship we have with Platte River Power Authority. It's really kind of a technical accounting thing, which is always fun to implement and explain. And because the CAFR is a large document that has a lot of information, I've also included in your agenda items some summary information of fund balances and other things that I'm sure you've all reviewed. That concludes my brief presentation. I'm going to turn it over to Kevin Smith of McLadry LLP. This firm was the firm that performed the independent audit of the financial statements for 2012 and he'll give a brief presentation and then we'll be available to answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Molly.
Good evening, Mayor Alcooms, Members of Council. We've got a brief presentation as Molly mentioned. Let me get this pulled up here. Just to go through a few of the highlights from this year's audit and also want to make sure I answer any questions that you have. The document that Molly referred to, which is known as the CAFR, that is 200-plus pages of financial information. Management does a great job of preparing the financial statements. The responsibility of these financial statements are the city's accounting finance department. Our responsibility is to give an opinion on those statements, whether they're fairly stated in accordance with all the governmental accounting standards that are out there. And I'm pleased to report that in that CAFR, you'll see that it was a unmodified or a clean opinion that was given on the financials. So that is the highest level of an opinion that we as auditors can give on an entity's financial statements. Also, as a part of our audit process, we perform a compliance audit where we look at the certain federal programs, grant money that the city spends each year. And this year, we tested two programs in great detail, the Left Hand Create Grant and the Energy Efficiency and Conservation Block Grant, which accounted for about 67% of the federal grant expenditures that the city spent this year. The compliance section of the report starts on page 219 of the CAFR. So you'll see there a summary of the grant expenditures. You'll also see the opinions that we gave on the programs that we tested. I'm also pleased to report that the opinions that we gave are unmodified or clean opinions on those programs that we tested. In addition, there's no significant deficiencies or material weaknesses over internal controls that we have reported on. So you'll see clean opinions for compliance as well. This next slide just has a few really high-level financial information from the financial results from this year and then there's just a few graphs that we'll go through after this slide. But overall, the city's, looking at the city as a whole, so all the governmental activities, all of the business-type activities, there was an increase in net position of 5.2 million. So that net position is basically the city's equity. Governmental activities increased by 5.2 million and business type increased by 8.8 million dollars. The fund balance of the city's governmental funds decreased by 2.3 million and that decrease was due to the Street Systems Fund decreased by about 1.8 million and then there were other governmental funds that decreased by 1 million dollars. The general fund did have an increase of 400, about $450,000 over last year. The general fund budgeted expenditures were 73.5 million while the actual expenditures were 68 million, so the general fund was under budget. As far as debt administration goes, just a few points up there. Total debt of the city decreased by 5 million dollars over 2011. And you know, as Jim mentioned earlier, when you go and issue debt for the city, these outstanding bonds that the city has are issued ratings by Moody's and Standard and Poor's. And so all of the outstanding bonds that the city has out there are rated A or better by Moody's and S&amp;P. This next slide here just shows the revenue of all of the city's governmental funds. So this is general fund and all of the special revenue funds, capital projects funds, debt service funds. Total revenue was 101.2 million dollars, so that very top line shows what the total revenue has been for the past six years of the city. This is the highest that it has been in the past, in the past six years. 2007, you were at about 99.3 million, so you can see the trend has been back upwards since the dip down in 2008 through 2010. The majority of the revenue that the city receives for its governmental funds is through taxes. So you can see the red line there is the revenue from, that the taxes, that the city receives from taxes on an annual basis, which is about 71.4 million dollars. This compares to 69.6 million dollars last year, so there was a slight increase in tax revenue of the city. The next slide then shows the expenditures for all of the governmental funds by the different functions that the city provides. So the total expenditures increased from about 96 million dollars last year to about 107 million dollars in 2012. So you can see that the largest category of expenditures for your governmental activities that the city spends money on is public safety, which makes up about 35% of those total governmental expenditures. Each of these, each of the functions from 2011 have increased, but all of the expenditures were within budget. None of the funds exceeded their budgeted allocations. The next slide shows the fund balance of the general funds and it shows it by the categories that are assigned to that fund balance. And it's based on the level of spending constraints that are associated with the, with the fund balance. So starting from top to bottom, the top is the unassigned and then as you move down, they become more and more restrictive in nature. Where, when you get down to the red, those are restrictions by external parties that you can't change the purpose of those restrictions. Within the yellow, that's the committed fund balance, which the purpose of those funds can be changed, but it has to be based on a formal council resolution. So the unassigned portion of the fund balance for the general funds at December 31st, 2012, was about 40% of your total general funds, fund balance, which increased last year from 14.9 million to 15.4 million. So it did see an increase overall. You can see the different categories within the fund balance has remained relatively consistent and about 40% is unassigned. This slide then shows some of the activity of the, of the city's enterprise funds. So the four enterprise funds that the city presents in their financial statements, we show operating income, which for two of the funds you'll see is a negative number. But the next, the next group of the numbers there that you see is the operating income excluding depreciation expense. Depreciation expense is a non-cash item, so a lot of times when you look at operating income, you do exclude that. And when you do take out depreciation expense, all of the enterprise funds are operating at a positive level. And the last, the last group there shows the cash flows from operations. So all of the enterprise funds are having positive cash flows each year, or 2012 and prior to that. As a part of our audit, you also should have received a report to the Honorable Mayor and Members of City Council. It looks like this. And this slide here just kind of summarizes a few, a few points that are, that are in that letter. That letter is just required communications that we make to you at the end of the audit process. Molly did touch on a few of the new accounting standards that were adopted this year. Those are listed up on the, up on the slide. The letter also includes a section about management's judgments and accounting estimates. Certain numbers within this CAFR do take some, some elements of judgment by management making some estimates. As a part of our audit process, we look at those significant estimates, look at their process for, for coming up with those estimates and to determine those were all reasonable. There were no journal entries that we had to propose as a part of the audit process, so when we come in to perform the audit, Molly and her group have done a great job with getting the books ready for us to look at. And if we had any, any other concerns or difficulties that we came across in performing the audit, we would have included that within that letter. I'm pleased to report we had no difficulties. The city's accounting department does a, does a great job with the audit and you know, everybody responds fully to our requests and our questions and is transparent in the information that they give us. So you know, I do want to thank Jim and Molly and everybody in the accounting group for, for being as helpful as they are and also for having a successful audit.
Well, thank you. Any questions? Can I have a motion to accept the report? All right, let's vote. It passes side six to zero with Councilmember Finley absent. Thank you very much. All right, now it's time for first call, public invited to be heard. Strider Benson, please come down and state your name and address for the record. Strider?
Strider.
Oh.
Fifty years ago, today was a very, very significant day in this country. That day, George Wallace stood in the doorway of the University of Alabama, so y'all folks can't come in. Nicholas Katzenbach, the Attorney General, set him aside. Couple hours later, two black students, first ever, entered the University of Alabama. Couple of hours later, President Kennedy gave his first and greatest and perhaps only civil rights speech. That night, at a church in Jackson, Mississippi, the people who were fighting for their rights heard President Kennedy's speech and were very enlivened and thrilled by it. And the leader in Jackson, Medgar Evers, drove home right after midnight and was murdered that night. Three years ago, I sang this song with the man who wrote it. "In Jackson, Mississippi, in 1963, there lived a man who was brave. He fought for freedom all of his life, but they laid Medgar Evers in his grave. They laid Medgar Evers in his grave. Whoa, they laid Medgar Evers in his grave. He fought for freedom all of his life, and they laid Medgar Evers in his grave. He fought for truth for all men to hear, black and white alike for to save. But a hate-filled white man named Barney Lovbeck with, laid Medgar Evers in his grave. He fought for, he spoke words of love, dignity, and justice. He died before he'd be a slave, but a high-powered rifle tore out his heart and laid Medgar Evers in his grave. Now Medgar has some company in his heavenly home, those little children of Birmingham, like Jesus, they died for you and for me. They died for you to be free."
Thank you. There's no one else on, public invited here? No clapping, please. So I guess we're to section eight.
Mayor, your first item actually has two ordinances with it. The first is ordinance 201317, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter 9.60 of the Longmont Municipal Code on Medical Marijuana. And the second one is ordinance 201318, a bill for an ordinance prohibiting the submission, acceptance, processing, or approval of any permit, license, or plan related to or the establishment or operation of any business that invites, accommodates, or permits the possession or use of marijuana. And Ben Ortiz is here to give you a presentation.
Mayor Alcooms, Members of Council, my name is Ben Ortiz, planning the Department of Economic Development. I actually don't have a presentation tonight as this item was discussed at rankfunk first reading, but I would be happy to answer any questions that you have.
I don't see any questions, so I think we'll just go ahead and open up the public hearing. Thank you, Ben. Open the public hearing on, is there anyone for the audience who'd like to speak on this Yeah, we have a list. Looks like James Mc, can't read the writing, Nick something or other. McCainy?
Yeah. Before he begins, Mayor Alcooms, could you clarify, is this on one ordinance or both of the ordinances? You can do either way.
Let's have that public hearing on both ordinances at once.
Thank you.
There's a button right there in front. There's a mic, there's a button, there you go. I'm James McVanny, my address is 7085 Cairo Road, Largest, Colorado. I'm here today to ask you, Honorable Council Members, to exercise imprudence and hold off and table this ordinance until the Colorado Department of Revenue passes its emergency rules, emergency temporary rules on July 1st of this year. Those rules will give you guys an idea of what the industry will look at. I believe if you acted before these rules came out, you would probably be going over the same matter again and wasting your taxpayers' money. Therefore, that would just, that's bad public policy, you should avoid that, obviously. I have been involved in over six elections where municipalities try to ban dispensaries. Been pretty successful in that and if you guys would like to ask me any questions of what I saw about before, after dispensaries banned or did not ban, I'm more than happy to answer you. I will tell you, if you do ban, you will keep employment in Longmont. Those people you will keep employed are the drug dealers. Those drug dealers that are not regulated are likely to have harder drugs. By banning, you will keep these people with the hard drugs and it's hurting public safety by not giving people a regulated access point that's not going to have the hard drugs. So again, I just want to reiterate, please table this ordinance till the state comes out with their emergency rules. Doing so otherwise is imprudent. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jerry Shepard?
Mr. Mayor, City Council, my name is Jerry Shepard. My office address is 710 11th Avenue, Suite 203D, and that is in Greeley, Colorado. I'm an attorney. I was also a volunteer circulator for 64 and have been involved in drug war issues for quite some time. As a little bit of history, let's talk about how we got to the point where we had to put something on the ballot. In 1937, prohibition was passed. In 1937, prohibition was passed, and unfortunately, there were some very nefarious references to racism, and also DuPont was a factor in banning the use of hemp paper as well and hemp for other uses, including clothing, fiber, fuel, and nutrients and so forth. And unfortunately, what we found with alcohol prohibition, it didn't work there. Cannabis prohibition doesn't work either, and the voters spoke clearly that they wanted to rethink prohibition, but within a regulatory framework. Amendment 64 was endorsed by various organizations, including but not limited to the ACLU, the Colorado Criminal Defense Bar, the NAACP, the Colorado Criminal Justice Reform Coalition, various faith leaders. And many people are rethinking the drug war. I invite you to look at a book that our church read as part of the Lenten season, The New Jim Crow by Michelle Alexander, that gives you a background on how the drug war works. And one thing I saw about a week ago, was in the New York Times, I saw it online, black people are still, to this day, four times more likely to be arrested for marijuana or cannabis offenses than white people. In this day and age, to still struggle with racism like this is very sad at best, especially apropos to note on the 50th anniversary of Medgar Evers murdered by a white supremacist. I ask that the council and mayor consider having the option of people in Longmont being able to have a retail center, have jobs, have a place where you can go that will be regulated and not have underage people attempting to purchase cannabis because the regulatory framework would provide for people being 21 or over. That works very well with the alcohol model, and there are enforcement mechanisms in place to make sure that happens. A cannabis store can be a part of the community, as many bars and liquor stores are parts of the community, they support community efforts. I believe that Oscar Blues was given some props by this entity some time recently. And so I would ask that you, as a body, either deny the motion to ban, or in the alternative to take Mr. McVany's suggestions and to postpone until some of the other things are worked out on a state level. The voters have spoken. '64 got more votes than Barack Obama did in the state. People of all political persuasions, liberal, conservative, moderate, think that it is a good idea to rethink prohibition. I ask you to stand with those who want to move forward, who want to have a source of jobs, and who want to have freedom. Unless you have any questions, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Renick?
Paul Renick, 21, 28, 24th, here in Longmont. All I ask is that we put this before the voters and let Longmont decide. Let Longmont decide what kind of businesses they want in the community. Let Longmont decide where they want the taxes to come from. Let Longmont decide if we need the jobs from this or not. There's some options coming before us as voters again, and one of those is a citizen initiative, which will probably be the next step. If you all don't go for it, maybe we can do it. I think we, I think we'll have the votes. If you guys put a citizen initiative up, you get to control the process. You get to control the regulation. If we put it up, we do. So I also ask that you table this until July. Let's look at what Colorado is going to do. Or just commit to putting this up to the voters. Let's keep the yes and no language suggested at the last meeting. Councilmember Finley offered some up. Unfortunately, she's not here tonight. And you guys remain part of the process. It's time to move forward. Thanks so much.
Eugene, I've got a quick question for you. Is it okay to run currently both the public hearing on the combined amendment as a continuation?
Mayor and Council, Eugene, can you repeat the question? I don't quite understand it.
Well, this is kind of a two-part, and the sign-up sheet, you know, people signed up for the first part or the second part. Can I just run the public hearing concurrently, continuously through both parts, and then we can have our discussion?
Yes, you can. The charter just requires that there be a public hearing before final passage of an ordinance. It doesn't specify on how that hearing is conducted.
Okay, all right. So we'll continue with the public hearing.
Hi, my name is Sean Hauser, and I'm an attorney in Denver, and I work with Sensible Colorado, which is an organization advocating for sensible and responsible drug policy. Like Mr. Renick said, it's important to listen to the voters, and 58% of the voters in Longmont voted for amendment 64, which means they voted for responsible control of marijuana in Longmont. And that's really the key to this whole issue, is responsible control of marijuana. Whether or not you guys opt to allow marijuana establishments in your community, you can't prevent the personal possession, cultivation, or private use by adults. So the real question is, how are you going to regulate marijuana in the community in the best interest of public safety? The state has created a comprehensive, robust, public safety geared regulatory scene. They'll have, the governor just signed three bills. It's pretty much more stringently regulated than any other industry. There's going to be more rules coming out in just a few weeks by the Department of Revenue. And like we've heard, I think it'd be more prudent and reasonable for the city to wait until the time is appropriate and they have all the information they need in order to take action. And any issues the city may face will be significantly more clear in a few weeks. Longmont shouldn't fear of becoming the next Amsterdam. I've heard that's a concern. Part of the great thing about the new regulations is local governments have a lot of discretion on how they want to regulate these businesses. You can limit them in number, you can ban advertising, whatever regulations you think are appropriate for your community or for you to decide. And I believe a carefully crafted regulatory environment will ensure Longmont is not the next Amsterdam and at the same time eliminate the underground market and the marijuana that's without safety controls and without quality controls and sold in minors that would occur if regulated stores were not allowed. There's nothing that requires the city to act now. They actually have until October 1st under the law to decide whether to opt in or opt out. A lot of localities have wanted to wait to draft the regulations and wait until the July date when the Department of Revenue regulations come out. And I think a wait or a short moratorium would be appropriate at this time, but I think a ban right now is jumping the gun a little bit, and the city really doesn't have to act right now. And again, 58% of the voters recognize this, so I just ask that you take a thoughtful approach to considering how you want to regulate marijuana in your community. Thank you.
Thank you. Got another question for you, Eugene. If someone's, they can't go again.
Single hearing.
Okay. So we'll just, Strider Benson?
Here's Marley Evers' book, For Us the Living. I lived in Chicago in the 70s. I raised two daughters as a single father in the inner city of Chicago. Both happened, grew up, got married, had master's degrees. But times got pretty hard, and what happened? During one decade, we lost 300,000 productive jobs in Chicago area in just two industries, electronics and steel. Well, if you're going to export 300,000 jobs, what do you do with the people who used to earn an honest, hard living? And their children, who have no chance? You bring in drugs. Well, how do you get people to go into addictive drugs? Well, you take away the mild recreational drugs. You ban marijuana, you throw millions of people in jail, you raise the price of marijuana, which makes it competitive with cocaine. Then you bring in tons of cocaine and create a war, and a gang war, and a race war. And that's what's been going on for the last 40 years in this country. You permanently house and remove the unemployed kids off the street, and you ban them for voting for the rest of their lives, so they can't speak about anything that's going on. We have the highest prison rate and the highest prison total of any country in the world. 2,300,000 Americans are in prison right now. It's the new form of slavery. Working in the cotton fields in Texas for 12 cents a day. Yes, slavery. Private prisons for profit. And the suppression of unions and workers' rights and democratic rights. That's what the entire drug war has been, and we have millions and millions and millions of victims, and their families, and their grandchildren, and their great-grandchildren. Stop this. Table the motion and see what the state does, and we can probably go along with what the state does. Part of the game plan, you tax the people, the house the slaves, and then you say, there's no money, so let's cut back on schools and food and healthcare and the environment and what government should be about. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anybody else in the audience who'd like to speak?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. My name is Teri Robnett. If I need to sign a form or something?
No, just state your name and address.
All right. My name is Teri Robnett. I live at 5235 Newton Street in Denver, and I am the founder of the Cannabis Patients Action Network, and I am an expert on marijuana policy, particularly in Colorado as it relates to medical marijuana. I'm a patient, I have been for the past four years. I'm calling to ask that you postpone any decision regarding a ban on recreational marijuana in Longmont. And I also would ask that you look at overturning your existing ban that you have on medical marijuana. And then use that to build your reasonable regulations on recreational. In my opinion, in my experience, bans are, quite honestly, lazy policymaking. It's a lot easier to just ban an industry or ban a substance or a practice or whatever than it is to take the time to do the research and to do the work to develop real, reasonable regulations. And I think that the voters of Longmont, with their 58% in favor of amendment 64, have, they expect a lot more from their city council, from their elected officials, than for you to just go take the easy way and institute another ban. So I would say that your constituents have challenged you to do more than that, to actually do the work and come up and develop real, reasonable regulations. It can be done. We've seen it happen with medical all across the state. Now granted, you already have a ban on medical, so you're behind the eight ball. You're behind a lot of other cities and counties in Colorado. I'll give you that. And I've talked to a lot of other cities and counties that are in the same position. In fact, I was speaking with the Jefferson County Commissioners yesterday evening, and what a lot of them are doing is they are implementing a temporary moratorium so that they can get their medical regulations in place and so that they do have the time to do, to work on the zoning and those kinds of things, and also so that you do have an opportunity to see what the new MED rulemaking is going to look like. We're all waiting for that. Now, I know that a lot of people are worried about what's going to happen with the feds, what happens if the feds come in, and I hear that a lot, and I just want to give you a little reality check here. One, number one is no Colorado dispensary has been closed by the feds. In fact, those that got the letters that they were too close to schools, they were allowed to move. They had the choice. They could close or they could move. And in fact, on the days that they were supposed to move, the DEA agents that were at the old locations were actually directing the patients to the new location of the dispensaries. Now, would they have done that if they were intending to just shut everything down? I don't think so. Also, no law enforcement officer has ever been charged or arrested for following their state's laws regarding marijuana. And keep in mind, medical marijuana is legal in Washington, DC.
Your time's up.
So, thank you. I want to just make myself available to you as a resource if you have any questions. Thank you.
Mayor and Council, in relation to your previous question, I think it may be fair if there was confusion whether there would be two separate hearings, if there's one person that would, or other members of the public that would like to testify. I think it's at the discretion of council to allow them to testify as if there were two separate hearings.
Okay. Right. Is there anybody else that'd like to speak from the public? That has not spoken yet on either the two marijuana amendments? All right, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember David?
I don't, I mean, I actually think it would be a good idea, if there's two different ordinances, that if there was somebody who had actually signed up to speak twice, better safe than sorry. If there's not a line, it's going to take three minutes. I say I would move that if there was somebody that had signed up to speak on both, they've already spoken once, if there's one or two people.
Yep.
I move that we actually allow them to speak on this other issue.
Okay. All right, that seems reasonable. That's, there's only three people, but, all right, let's vote on whether we're going to allow the people to speak twice. All right, it passes six to zero with Councilmember Finley. So Jerry Shepard?
I just spoke. Was it Councilmember Finley? I don't care for now.
Okay. And James McVany, yes.
Hi, my name is James McVany. I've already stated my address. I'm also involved with the industrial hemp in Colorado. I did the Pro 64 Issue Committee called Vote Hemp Yes on 64. Right now, we're at a process where, like, we're identifying regions that where there would be jobs. Longmont is ideally situated for processing plants for industrial hemp, because, you know, you have the rail lines here, you also have the existing agriculture outside. And if you guys are going to be really rushing into something like this to industrial hemp's cousin, I would say an investor would scratch his head if he wants to build a plant here. And I think you guys need to consider that this complication, if you do ban with almost the land, against almost the landslide will of voters, if 58%, 60% is landslide, you are going to hurt the prospects of marijuana's cousin, industrial hemp, coming here. Thank you.
Thank you. Paul Renick, would you like to add any more to here? All right, all right. Anybody else in the audience that'd like to speak, okay, I guess I'll close the public So are there any questions or comments from council? I guess Councilmember Levinson?
Mayor, I'll defer to you if you want to go first.
You know, I hear 58%. My job is to actually support the people that represent our community, and if 58% of the people want regulated marijuana, marijuana regulated like alcohol, then it's not my job to go against the will of the people. You know, myself, I voted for it not because I wanted marijuana regulated, but I did want to decriminalize marijuana. But the ballot language said, you know, to regulate it like alcohol, so, you know, it's a tough job. You know, we have two parts here. The second part is to ban the marijuana clubs, which really wasn't part of it. And, you know, I think last time we were all 100% for banning the clubs, which has nothing to do with regulating marijuana, so I think we can, you know, I'd be willing to want to deal with that issue tonight. But the other issue, we do have a precedent, is that when one council member is gone for an evening to delay a vote, even though she did call me and personally said that she didn't think it would make a difference on the outcome, so she didn't, you know, ask me to delay the vote. But anyway, all other people trying in. Councilmember Levinson?
Thank you, Mayor. So I just want to let people know that doing a ban is not a lazy man's or lazy woman's or lazy policymaker's option. You know, we have a ban in another policy area that was certainly not -- we can tell that our city attorney's office is not lazy under that ban that was enacted by our voters. And we are not a council recently that has shied away from controversial issues or not worked hard on ordinances in areas that were of concern to our community. So my opinion on this currently is that, first of all, I don't want to wait necessarily and have something not turn out right with the way the state regulations are written. The ordinance, the amendment also gave cities an option to opt in or opt out. And along with the testimony we heard many nights on medical marijuana, there is a difficulty with location of these retail stores. And right now, we've got a lot of things on our plate. And I think that I would be in favor of not having a ban or overturning a ban at such time as we had some surety in the regulatory environment. And I think I mentioned this a couple of weeks ago, Longmont doesn't have to be first on every bit of new regulation. I think we could take a pass on this one and let somebody else do the brain damage. And I'm also quite disappointed by the state audit of the medical -- the state's handling of the medical marijuana facilities and how they were -- had very poor oversight, even though we have very restrictive regulations in some areas. I'd also want to see what happens in the vote in November. The voters will have to vote a new set of taxes so that there could be a regulatory framework that's there but also funded. So I'm willing to take a wait-and-see approach on this. But, you know, if people want to grow something in their own home, if they want to smoke it their own home, or do whatever they want with the product that they produce themselves, that's still an option that's absolutely open to everyone. And I'm just not in favor of having no regulation instilled, but the unsurety at the state level. So I'm going to support the -- both of the ordinances on the ban on establishments and banning accommodating operations.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 2013-17.
Second.
All right. Let's vote. Oh, excuse me. Councilmember Burger.
I mean, I guess the -- before we vote, I want to say that the people who spoke in favor, or the people who showed up and spoke tonight and encouraged us to hold off or to permit it, I have never seen a more polite, down-to-earth group present their arguments. That was very much appreciated, appreciated. And I can picture what I'm about ready to say, show up on YouTube should I ever run for reelection again. But I'll be the first to admit, I am out of touch when it comes to marijuana use. But my vote, the reason why I'm voting, and I've said it before, the way I'm going to vote, that we do not permit residential establishments within the city of Longmont for a couple of reasons.
Retail.
I'm sorry, what did I say?
Residential.
Yeah, I meant retail. You know, exactly. Come to my house, my address is, I'll leave the door unlocked. Tony Stark. The -- but the reason is because I can, for a couple of reasons. This is not medical marijuana. The city already decided to ban those. This would be a different conversation if we were talking medical marijuana, for me at least. We're talking about retail establishments and stores in the city. The question becomes, what do we want? I understand that this is an issue that, on one hand, there are people that say, we want to legalize drugs. Again, if we were talking about on a federal level and about decriminalizing drugs, my vote would be different. But right now, as it stands, you can grow, smoke, and possess marijuana, medical or recreational, within the city of Longmont. For me, the question is, do we want to start seeing stores in Longmont selling this? You can go to Pace and Main Street and Highway 66 in the county on the other side of the highway and buy it. You know, so it is available. It's not a question about whether or not we have it or not. The question is, are we going to permit retail establishments to sell it? And if we do that, I mean, people, I was the one who said the Amsterdam comment. But what I meant by that was, you are going to have liquor stores but like, you know, but you have pot stores but like liquor stores. The question is, do we want Longmont to look that way? I don't. And so for a lot of reasons. First and foremost, I don't want to send a message to my kids that I say smoking pot's okay. It might be okay for you, but in our organizational form of government, we have a republic. And we here on city council hear so many city staff presentations from city staff and the attorneys that I learn a lot. I'm not saying I know any more than anybody that stood at the podium or that I know any more than the voters. But I do feel like I have a responsibility to vote my conscience. And it's not a vote against marijuana, but it is a vote against retail establishments within our city. Not about medical, not about smoking it, not about possessing it. It's just, is this what we want in Longmont? And I, for one, don't want it. And since I'm sitting on city council, I've got to make a decision and vote my conscience. And that's how I'm going to vote. So I felt, I mean, at the very least, you came up and you told us your thoughts. When I vote, I want people to know why I'm voting where I'm voting.
Any other comments from council? Okay, I guess we'll vote. Just won the 2013-17. So yes, bans it and no. Okay, it passes four to two with the mayor and Councilmember Samori descending and Councilmember Finley absent. Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. And as Councilmember Bagley said, the arguments that were made greatly appreciated. Some folks have come up and have not been as polite, and that's greatly appreciated. I understand the arguments. I understand the arguments for and against when we were talking about medical marijuana. Luckily, Ben has all the -- and having been on council at that time, we've seen what we need if, once we -- how we vote, if there is a ban in place and we need to rescind a ban, we have a lot of this. The hard work has been done, so we know what we need to do to 1,000 feet, 500 feet, 750 feet. All those numbers just keep coming back again and again. You know, 64 was a very, it was a mixed bag. Allowed folks to have decriminalized on a state level, unfortunately still at the federal level, still a criminal offense. It puts the state in a very awkward position. So with that, again, I appreciate the comments. They did not go on deaf ears. But we're in a unique position. Councilmember Bagley makes some very good points. With that, I move ordinance 2013-18.
Second.
Okay, any further discussions? Okay, let's vote on 2013-18. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Finley absent.
Councilmember Bagley. That said, could we actually have staff, when that comes out, shoot us at the very least an email update on what the state does so we, if need be, we can revisit this issue? Fair enough?
Mayor Coombs, your next item in this ordinance, 2013-19, which is a bill for an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 16, Sections 040, 050, and 060 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding review and hearings for parking infractions. There is no formal staff presentation on this item, but we have members of the staff in the audience to answer questions.
Okay. Is there any councilmembers who would like to comment on this before I open up the public hearing? All right. Seeing none, I'll open this up to public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this ordinance? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Does someone want to make the motion on this item? Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. I move ordinance 2013-20.
Dash 19.
Sorry.
19, excuse me.
Dash 19.
I don't know.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Finley absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item is ordinance 2013-20, which is a bill for an ordinance amending additional appropriations for the expenses and liabilities of the city of Longmont for the fiscal year beginning January 1, 2013. And again, we do not have a formal staff presentation on this, but do have members in the audience to answer questions.
Okay, does anybody in council have any questions? Not, I'll open this up to public hearing. Is there anybody from the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Rip.
I would like to move ordinance 2013-20.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Finley absent.
Right, your next item is ordinance 2013-20, a bill for an ordinance amending the 2013-2017 capital improvement program. And again, we do not have a formal staff presentation on this item.
Okay, are there any questions from councilmembers before I open this up for public hearing? All right, I'll open this up for public hearing. Is there anybody in the public that would like to speak on this item? Seeing none, I'll close the public hearing. Councilmember Levinson.
Yes, Mayor, I'd like to move ordinance 2013-21.
Second.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Finley absent.
Mayor Coombs, your next item E was pulled from the agenda, so we'll move on to item 8F, which is ordinance 2013-24, a bill for an ordinance amending Section 2.32.060 of the Longmont Municipal Code to adopt updated Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, including amendments regarding community health and wellness. And Sean Lewis, our Assistant City Manager, will make the initial presentation.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Sean Lewis, Assistant City Manager. The proposed amendments before you tonight reflect many of the directives that you provided back in December with regard to these comprehensive plan amendments. The main point that I want to make is that the comprehensive plan, as you know, is not regulatory in nature. It is, in fact, a vision for the community and a statement of who we want to become, but not necessarily a mandate for how we get there. And I know that there are many people in the audience tonight who participated in the process of coming up with many of the changes that you see before you. And that's the last point that I would make, is it really is a partnership. The comprehensive plan, while the city is the keeper of that plan, it's really a community-wide effort. It's a partnership between many organizations, just like these amendments reflect. So with that, I'll turn it over to Aaron Fosdick, who will go over the amendments.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council. Aaron Fosdick, Senior Planner with the Economic Development Department. As Sean mentioned, we're here tonight for the public hearing and second reading of the LICP amendments related to community health and wellness. Last year, the Planning and Zoning Commission recommended approval of changes to the comprehensive plan to add a community health and wellness chapter and also make recommended changes to the transportation chapter. These changes were primarily focused on four goals. Those were helping Longmont become a healthier community, integrating land use and transportation so that activity could be easily incorporated into people's daily lives, promoting access to healthy food, and supporting the local food system. Changes to the transportation chapter were generally focused on making active living and active transportation more prominent and recognizing that community health is impacted by transportation. As council will recall, we brought this item to you in a study session on December 11. And at that meeting, we also brought to you an integrated version of this material. Sure you'll recall that, and that was in lieu of the standalone chapter. You'll also recall that we had quite a discussion that evening, and you provided some direction to staff that we revise the integrated version to focus on infrastructure and transportation. So included in your packet tonight is Attachment 10, which is Exhibit 1. And this includes the changes related, so it's the integrated version, related to transportation and infrastructure. That includes changes to the introduction of the comprehensive plan, the land use and urban design chapter, of course, the transportation chapter, and the parks, greenways, and open space chapter. If council prefers to move this version forward as opposed to a standalone chapter, you would need to substitute Exhibit 1 for Exhibit A, which is currently referenced and attached to ordinance 2013-24. So that concludes my presentation, and I'd be happy to answer any questions that council might have.
Okay, well, is there any questions from council right now? Okay, I'm going to open this up to public hearing. We've got Sue Hicken. All right. Come on down and state your name and address, please. Yeah, turn on the mic.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and council members. My name is Sue Hykenen. I'm at 5807 Blue Mountain Circle in Longmont. I'm a registered dietitian with Kaiser Permanente. And of course, I also live in Longmont and have three school-aged children. I'm here in support of the health and wellness component of the comprehensive plan. In my work on a daily basis, I see children and work with families who find out that their children are developing conditions such as prediabetes, fatty liver disease, and high cholesterol. Obesity and physical inactivity fuel these mostly preventable conditions that usually we only see developing in adulthood. Although Colorado is the leanest state in the country, or likewise, we could call it the least obese state in the country, or ranked 23rd in the nation for childhood obesity, we can do a lot better than that. Currently, one of four children in the Colorado, in the state of Colorado, are overweight or obese. The parents that I work with are scared. They want their children to be healthy. It's not as simple, though, as cutting out a single food or reading a diet book. It's about embracing a lifestyle of healthy eating and active living for the whole family. Counseling and education like I provide is important, but it's only a part of the picture. Families need to implement our recommendations in the real world. And as a parent, I know there are many obstacles that we face. You hear people talk about our current environment being toxic for our health or even promoting obesity. I'd like us also to think about the opportunities that we have to have an environment that actually promotes and encourages healthy lifestyles. By coming together as a community and engaging in strong partnerships, we can make healthy choices a little easier for our residents, both young and adult. And I do encourage you to consider the health and wellness component of the comprehensive plan. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is it on? Okay. Hi, good evening, Mayor Coombs and city council members. My name is Clarissa Davies, and I live at 3950 Hawthorne Circle in Longmont, and I am a recent graduate of Silver Creek High School. As a student of Silver Creek, I was a part of the Silver Creek Leadership Academy, a program that is committed to empowering a community of leaders who are active stewards in a diverse and ever-changing society. As part of SCLA, I worked with local organizations in the community to help As part of SCLA, I worked with local organizations in the community to host screenings of The Weight of the Nation, an HBO special that documents the damage that obesity is doing to our country and our nation. Local experts also attended in response to the film and to share their health expertise and opinions with the audience. The goal of this was to highlight the importance of healthy, active lifestyles and advocate this to the City of Longmont. This project showed me the impact of being unhealthy and its detrimental effects that are so often overlooked. I'm here delighted to ask you to consider myself and other youth in the community when making a decision on items that impact the health, our health, and that are crucial to our well-being. Please support me to reach, please support me to reach my fullest potential. Thank you.
Thank you. Abigail Dusson?
Hi. Abigail Dusson, but I go by Abby. I'm at 327 Sugarman Court in Longmont. I'm here also to support a health and wellness chapter being incorporated into the Longmont Comprehensive Plan. I moved to Longmont last summer, and I was immediately impressed with the availability of bike paths, healthy foods at the farmer's market, the recreation center. And I'm now expecting my first child, and I, you know, I really want my son, now I'm having a boy, I just found out recently, you know, to be raised in a healthy community. And I really think that healthy communities just don't happen on their own, especially for people from lower incomes and, you know, in unfortunate, more unfortunate circumstances. They need an extra sort of encouragement, education, and resources to figure out a pathway to a healthier lifestyle. And, you know, I really liked what the woman from Kaiser said before about childhood obesity, it's a real issue. And I really think that, you know, as council members, anything you can do to support a healthy community that we live in and really continue all the good things that Longmont's doing and really expand them with regard to the availability of bike paths, access to healthy food, as I mentioned, and also, you know, resources for people who may not have resources available to them for nutrition education and active transportation options. I also think that, you know, health and wellness programs and services and the built environment, you know, the bike paths, the bike lanes and whatnot, support safer communities and safe transportation for people and families to be able to get around Longmont safely from one place to the other. So I'm in support of that as well. So thank you very much, just here to support it.
Thank you so much. Is there anybody else in the audience who would like to come speak on this item? Please step forward.
Mayor Coombs, a member of the council. Good evening. Eric Bergerson, Chair of Livewall Longmont Steering Committee. Spoke with you back in December during the study session in support of the separate chapter in the comprehensive plan for health and wellness. I'm here representing Livewall Longmont once again to do the same. I understand the situation, that there are a couple of options on the table, that there's some integrated language, particularly around the built environment and physical aspects of health that were recommended back in December. But I would still like to urge council to consider putting the full chapter in there. And here are three particular reasons why I think it's important. Jeff Sayak, I think, from Boulder Public County Health is going to come up and talk a little bit more from the technical standpoint. But when I think about this issue, I really think it's an issue that deserves leadership from the city council in terms of the vision that they have for the community looking forward. We have members of the community, obviously, that are concerned about their health. We have growing healthcare costs throughout the country going through the roof. We also have businesses that are very concerned about health. We have the Affordable Care Act coming down the road. We have an obesity epidemic approaching the country. With all these things that we're facing, it just strikes me as odd that health as a topic doesn't deserve its own chapter in the comprehensive plan in terms of establishing what the vision for Longmont should be relative to that. And I would ask you if the things that aren't in the chapters at certain right now don't maybe rise to the occasion for you to be a separate chapter, that maybe you consider actually expanding the topics that are being considered in the health chapter beyond just the health and wellness aspects, but also looking at other aspects of the healthcare system and as it relates to Longmont. I think it's that important for the community to set a vision so that Longmont gets where it wants to be rather than being controlled by events moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Anybody else? Yeah, you can just form a queue, I guess.
Good evening, Mayor Coombs, council members. My name is Jeff Sayak. I'm the Boulder County Public Health Director, 3450 Broadway, Boulder, Colorado. Thank you for taking public testimony on this. I want to highlight a couple of things, just what, one of the things that you've heard already that I want to personally emphasize and commit to in the process of moving some of these goals and strategies forward, and I know there was a lot of conversation around this, was the partnership. And there's been a significant amount of work that's been done in your community with your staff, with the partners in our community, with Boulder County Public Health, along with your Planning and Zoning Commission, to recommend those strategies and goals that you have in front of you tonight. And those strategies and goals, as I hope you saw from the attachment that I provided in my letter in your packet, are definitely best practice in this area. So with the adoption of these goals and strategies, you will take an active step in communicating that you personally care about the health and wellness of your residents and future generations within your community. This is a powerful opportunity for each and every one of you to make a statement and to help your community reach your mission, which states to enhance the quality of life for those who live in, work in, and visit our community. As the Public Health Director in Boulder County, I'm personally committed to assuring that people have healthy options and healthy choices. And I hope that you support the work that's been done by the community and by your staff and by your Planning and Zoning Commission up to this point. And I'll leave you with just one last thing. There was conversations, I know, before about what's the role of government in this. And there's, and I'm happy to share this with whoever wants to look at it, but there's a Healthy Eating and Active Living Cities and Towns Campaign that's currently underway in Colorado, and it's looking at helping councils establish and cities establish the very same things that you have in front of you tonight. I just want to read a few of the people that are on that, because you may know some of these people. Charles Bailey, Mayor Pro Tem Bennett, Colorado. This is the advisory committee I'm talking about that's helping people promote this. Mike Bratton, the Deputy City Manager of Littleton, Colorado. Renee Bullock, the Mayor Pro Tem of Commerce City, Colorado. Shane Hale, the City Manager of Cortez, Colorado. Nikki Noble, Mayor of Oak Creek, Colorado. Jan Martin, Mayor Pro Tem Colorado Springs, Colorado. Vicki Quinlan, Council Member of Brush, Colorado. And Heidi Williams, Mayor of Thornton, Colorado. So what you have in front of you tonight is definitely a step forward in you helping your community be the healthiest community and the most viable community in the state. So please, please support the inclusion of these goals and strategies. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff. Next in the queue.
Mr. Mayor and council, my name is Mark Sofield. I live at 1813 South Kaufman, Longmont. And I was a member of the task force early on that came up with some of the strategies and recommendations that found their way into the amended language. And I was here a few weeks ago, and I'm just here again to reiterate my support for the full amendment, the amendments to the transportation chapter as well as the standalone chapter on health and wellness. And I won't repeat what I said a couple of weeks ago, but I wanted to add one further thought, which is that as the city is approaching build-out, I think we need to be that much more thoughtful about how that build-out happens. And my personal interest is, and expertise is more in the area of the built environment, the physical environment, and the particular physical assets that Longmont has, its agricultural history, its old neighborhoods, its walkable neighborhoods, old walkable neighborhoods. But at the same time, I think we also need to think about the cultural assets that the city currently has and we would hope to preserve. And I think that the standalone health and wellness chapter goes some way towards addressing cultural issues around health and wellness that merit its own chapter. So anyway, I urge you to support the full amendment, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is anybody else that hasn't spoken yet that'd like to come forward?
Good evening, Mayor Coombs and city council. My name is Melissa Prakowski-Houghton, and I live at 1438 Galilee Lane here in Longmont. And I'm actually speaking on behalf of one of our steering committee members as part of Livewall Longmont, Joey Seagrist, who is also a Board of Education member, was unable to be here, so she's prepared a statement that she asked me to read. Her statement begins, "I'm a longtime resident of the Longmont area, Mom and St. Rain Valley School District Board of Education member. As such, I support a community that ensures healthy lifestyle choices are available and convenient for all who work, live, play, and learn in our community. A community approach to improving the health and quality of life for all who call Longmont home is a step toward ensuring Longmont remains a vibrant community. The St. Rain Valley School District supports health and wellness through efforts to increase the accessibility of fruits and vegetables, raise overall activity levels, and sustain resources which support wellness for the members of our school district and our community. In addition, an ever-growing number of schools throughout the district are developing activities and programs for students to learn about and participate in healthy lifestyle choices. I ask you to join us in supporting a healthy community through integrating health and wellness into the comprehensive plan. Thank you."
Thank you so much. Are you seeing anybody else who'd like to speak? I guess seeing none, I'll close the public hearing on this. Councilmember Witt.
Thank you, Mayor. We had a long, drawn-out conversation about this back in December, and I think everybody here on council is very supportive of healthy living and that, I think, the option I would like to move is option number two, to work with the integrated version focusing on infrastructure and transportation.
You know, the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan, it's just a plan. It's not a mandated document. It doesn't tell us how we have to implement it. You know, health is like the most important thing. It's always been my hot button. You know, Planning and Zoning and PRAD have both looked at this, and they recommend a separate chapter. I feel, as leaders, that health is such an important topic. It deserves a separate chapter. I really support that option more than option two. So I just feel really strongly that this is an opportunity for us to show our leadership on health and wellness. I see in our neighborhood, parents that walk their kids to schools, I notice that those kids stay skinny, but parents that drive their kids around and drop them off, you know, by the time they're fifth graders, they start to get chunky. And I see the same thing with pet owners. It's, you know, yeah, it's, it is important, but I think we need education. I think we need to say that health is important. And as leaders, I think it's our duty to, so, anyway, that's my two cents on it. I'd be, I'd be disappointed if we don't have it as a separate chapter. Councilmember Levison?
Well, there have been a few things that have happened since the last time we looked at this issue. The head of the Chamber of Commerce in Metro Denver came up and spoke to a number of people in the room that, around health and wellness, and what an economic driver it is. And she made a really amazing business case, dollars and cents for when you bring your policy out in front with health and wellness, how that supports and draws the attention of other businesses and allows them to look at your city in a more favorable light. Frankly, businesses are looking for cities to, that have higher levels of health and wellness, as a good investment. A good investment, why? Because in general, health insurance costs are lower. That's the bottom line for business. This is not some flim-flam, you know, about, you know, having strawberries instead of Twinkies for breakfast. It's really about what your community presents to the world. And when you have a strong policy statement, and again, it's a vision statement, the comprehensive plan is a vision, and simply by having a separate chapter on health and wellness sends that signal. The other thing I want to point out is that the document that Mr. Sayak from Boulder County held up is actually a project with Colorado Municipal League. And I serve on the board, as you know, with a couple of members of that task force. And let me tell you, they have had communities far more conservative than ours, and councils with a far more conservative makeup than ours, pass and consider things that are as strong or somewhat stronger than what we're looking at now. I know that Bennett really looked and has already seen their efforts around health and wellness has spurred some additional economic development. So bottom line, having the chapter doesn't take anybody's Diet Coke away, doesn't mean that we can't have Winchell's Donuts on Main Street. It simply means that we have aspirations and we have a vision to present our community in the best light, that we were, that we're healthy, we're active, and that frankly, we're moving, we're moving forward on things. And frankly, a lot of cities have already taken the lead on this. I think, you know, by, by having the separate chapter and the amendments to the transportation chapter, we're just following what's becoming the standard best practice in the state. So I'd like to have us move forward with the separate chapter. I know there's a motion on the floor, but I ask that council members that either made the motion or seconded it to reconsider their support of the other option and change their minds and support the first option, having the full chapter. And I also will point out that Planning and Zoning, it took them two years to understand this and to fully unanimously support the chapter with a lot of education and a lot of coming to an understanding of what this actually meant and what it actually does not say. So I will not vote in favor of this motion, but I would ask council members look at option one, the full chapter.
Councilmember Levison?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I just want to make sure, I might withdraw my second, but what you, Councilmember Witt, what you actually moved was, in our packets, the section starting on page 501, correct?
I'm going to have a hard time getting to that because Dropbox is not working with me.
That's right. But I guess what I'm saying is it's the, it's 501, and then the integrated changes. And what was in our packet, ending with page 520?
It's the integrated version, yes.
Okay, all right, just making sure. Because I think that, I mean, I think that having, whether we call it a chapter, or whether we call it, you know, we've got several pages here that are basically taking good fundamental ideas on health and wellness and incorporating them into our city's DNA in a way that basically is saying, we want integrated trails and easy access to pedestrian walkways and biking, and we're going to eat right. Heck, I'm even okay with the gardens, you know? And there's a page, I mean, page 501 and 502 talk about the importance of healthy eating and active living. And I don't know where that would go, but a section called Community Health and Wellness kind of strikes me almost like a chapter. And the problem with the chapter that I have, I mean, I've lost some weight, I'm swimming in the mornings, I'm trying to eat right, Diet Coke aside, but, but I like the idea that you can't, future politicians and city staff, they'd have a hard time going back into the, into the DNA of this, and I'm doing it. This is basically saying, you know, we as a city are going to try to be healthy, and it's not mandating it, and I'm going to vote for it. it's not mandating it, and I'm gonna vote for it. So, yeah, I won't withdraw my second, because that's exactly where I was hoping that you had moved. Thank you, Councilmember Whit.
Councilmember Santos.
Thank you, Mayor. So, this idea of a chapter came up two councils ago. I want to say, two councils ago, so this is the third council that's now seen it. Councils change, directions change. I've heard that more conservative councils have voted for things of this nature, so now we're gonna bring liberalism and conservatism into this discussion. Great. Councilmember Levison brought some more conservative councils have voted things on this. Heard racism this evening, so we're gonna just throw it all out there tonight. Trying to go to my happy place, Harold, trying to go to my happy place. I'm not in favor of a chapter. I like the integrated version much better. What happens is, and what has happened in the past on the councils that I have served on, current members of council and former members of council have used the comprehensive plan, not as guidelines, but as strict adherence that you have to do this. This is what the comp plan says, you have to do this. I've sat in many of these chairs and iterations of council, and I've heard members of council say, "The comprehensive plan says this, you have to do this." That's why I'm against this chapter, because depending on who sits here, whether I'm here or not, or the next person, or the next several of us, ten to fifteen years down the line, you can have somebody say, "Nope, comp plan says this, you have to do this." I've heard it. I've also heard, what's the exceptional benefit in an annexation? We took that out, because a council member, former council member, I should say, used that. What's the exceptional benefit to this annexation? Where is it, say, in the comprehensive plan that this is gonna be an exceptional benefit to the city of Longmont? This has been, the comp plan for members, some members of council has been used as a weapon against whether they like development or they don't like development. Do I like some of the things that are in this? Yes, I do. As Councilmember Bagley said, "I'm trying to get healthy myself. I'm a type-two diabetic." Not many people know that. There it is. Diagnosed last February, type-two diabetic. I'm overweight. I know it. Been working on it. Lost forty-five pounds. I'm happy about it. Still got some work to do. I'd like to lose another person. Unfortunately, I slipped and fell on some ice, and so my tore muscle in my rehab has not been the best right now. Cut out Diet Coke, I'm like Councilmember Bagley. Cut out Al Sod, I've been drinking a lot of watered-down tea and a lot of water, although Longmont Water Dale is some of the best water I've had. I went to Anaheim just recently, it was terrible. The water there's terrible. So I'm all for healthy living and vegetables and growing gardens and things of that nature, but I think what we can do is integrate what we have here into the existing comprehensive plan that we have. Because my concern is, if you put it in a chapter, members of council will use it as a weapon. I appreciate the hard work that everyone has done. It will not go to the wayside. It will be integrated. Aaron, you've done a great job, and Frodo, I know you're there too. But to have it as a separate chapter, I think sends the wrong message. Because what's gonna happen is, you can get somebody in these chairs and use it incorrectly.
Councilmembers Murray.
Well, thank you, Mayor Coombs. I wasn't mentally prepared yet, but I'll second what everybody's, what everybody's said so far. I think by integrating it, it weaves it into the fabric of the document itself, and people, I think, will read it and understand it better as opposed to having a separate chapter. I know sometimes when I'm reading stuff, I skim over things that don't grab me, but if I'm reading it and it's integrated into a chapter, I'm more likely to read it. And I think the city of Longmont overall has done a tremendous job in making sure that we're a healthy community with a good lifestyle. And that's why a lot of the companies come to Longmont, because of the lifestyle. We have lots of trails, lots of bike trails, and I don't know that we need to make it any clearer, I mean, it's visible to anybody that comes to town, that we want to be healthy and we want to continue to be healthy. So I agree with the motion, and I'll be voting for it.
Councilmember Whit.
I just want to emphasize, either option is going to send a message that Longmont is committed to healthy lifestyles, and the reason why I support the integrated rather than the called-out chapter is, I prefer to see the city use its resources in different ways, and it, the called-out chapter was asking for the city to repeat functions that were already being done by the county, and I would prefer us to absolutely make getting around Longmont by foot reasonable and encouraging activity. I want it to be passive, not active. Government's position in this should be enabling, not as directive as I was concerned about. And I have to say, staff has been very helpful. As soon as I got on council and heard about this initiative, it immediately was a concern to me, and I think that I have come a long way, because I really do see the benefits. And option two preserves all the great things that were mentioned, sparse transportation, supporting healthy eating, and encouraging farmers' markets, and all the rest. So I think we've got the best, and integrating it into the comprehensive plan in the different areas, I think, is a stronger, stronger way to do it. So that's felt, I think.
Councilmember Bagley.
I just also, Aaron, hi, Aaron. Aaron, I think, met with all of us one-on-one. She came to my office with her new boss at the time, the city manager, and presented what was then the chapter, and gave what, told me at least what she was working on, and I think all of us, and then solicited feedback, brought it to council. I remember that particular council meeting. You might have felt like you were beat up on a little bit, but I want you to know that I have never seen, I mean, just so you know, this is a prime example of a city staffer doing awesome work, getting everything ready, asking council for direction and guidance, and then bringing it back in such a way that it's essentially the same thing you did originally, but did it in such a way that everybody's really excited about it. So, A+, you did a great job, regardless of how this vote goes.
Okay, I guess it's signed vote for the motion that's on the floor. All right, it passes forty-two. Mayor Coombs and Councilmember Levison descending. And I just wanted to make a comment that, you know, I think that the integrated plan is also a good plan. I think anything that the city can do to, as leaders, to let this community know that we all value health. You know, I know Mayor Portim Santos values health, because I see him in the gym working his butt off. He works hard, so I'm real proud of him, and we all care about our health, we care about our children's health, so this is where we are right now. So I guess we're ready to move on to the next item.
Mayor Coombs, the last item on your public hearings is ordinance 2013-25, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter 10.60 of the Longmont Municipal Code on fireworks. We don't have a formal staff presentation, but I believe the city attorney would like to talk to you about the amendments to the ordinance which we are just passing out.
Mayor and council, if you recall, on first reading, the council passed an amended ordinance, making some changes moved by Councilmember Bagley. The correct amended ordinance was published in the newspaper. The amended ordinance did not make it into the council packet, that is the one that we are handing out right now. The one that's in your electronic packet or paper, if some people have that, is the original one introduced, and if you recall, I can walk you through the changes that Councilmember Bagley moved and were eventually approved. Page 664 of your packet, lines eighteen through twenty in the prohibitions, deleting prohibited, deleting the fire ban declared by the governor, and upon property, a person has no right to occupy. Those are gone, line eighteen through twenty. And then the first line on page 665, after the city manager, we inserted, "In consultation with the public safety chief," and the rest of that provision is the same. So those changes were made, and this is the amended ordinance that council approved on first reading, which was just handed out, and you'd be acting on this amended ordinance.
All right, thank you. Is there any questions from council? Not, I'll open this up to the public hearing. Is there anybody from public who'd like to speak on this ordinance? I guess seeing no one, I'll close the public hearing. Would someone like to move the... Councilmember Whit.
Or Councilmember Bagley. I don't want to move this one. It's fireworks, they go boom. I would move that we adopt ordinance 2013, a bill for an ordinance amending chapter 10.6 of the Longmont Municipal Code on fireworks.
All right, let's vote.
Yes, number twenty-five, sorry.
Okay, that passes six to zero with Councilmember Finney absent. All right, should we take a ten-minute break? All right, should we take a 10-minute break?
Ready?
Yep.
Mayor Coombs, your item nine now is the consent agenda. First item is ordinance 2013-26, which is a bill for an ordinance amending Title 11, Chapter 11.04, Section 090 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding flashing yellow arrow signals and vehicles turning left. Public hearing second reading scheduled for June 25. Item 9B is ordinance 2013-27, a bill for an ordinance amending Chapters 15.04 and 1510 of the Longmont Municipal Code regarding breweries, wineries, and distilleries. Public hearing second reading scheduled for June 25. Item 9C is two ordinances. The first one is ordinance 2013-28, which is a bill for an ordinance conditionally approving the Quail Commercial Center annexation, which is generally located north of Quail Road and east of Main Street and zoning the property C Commercial. And item 9C2 is ordinance 2013-29, a bill for an ordinance approving the land use amendment to the Longmont Area Comprehensive Plan for Quail Commercial Center Annexation, generally located north of Quail Road and east of Main Street. Both of these ordinance have a public hearing scheduled for June 25. Item 9D is Resolution 2013-50, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and History Colorado for grant funding for a reconnaissance, historical, and agricultural survey of downtown Longmont properties. Item 9E is Resolution 2013-51, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Twin Peaks Metropolitan District. Item 9F is Resolution 2013-52, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Colorado Department of Transportation for maintenance of traffic signals, signs, and pavement markings. Item 9G is Resolution 2013-53, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its prevention and intervention program. Item 9H is Resolution 2013-54, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its Genesis Program. Item 9I is Resolution 2013-55, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and Boulder County for its Partners for a Clean Environment Program. Item 9J is Resolution 2013-56, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and State of Colorado for professional development opportunities for city employees at Front Range Community College. And item 9K is Resolution 2013-57, approving the intergovernmental agreement between the city and the State of Colorado for a grant to upgrade the digital trunk radio system software. Staff does not have any items that they need to pull.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, I'd like to pull 9C for discussion, please.
Councilmember Bagley?
I'd like to pull 9A.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to move the consent agenda minus 9A and C, please.
All right, let's vote on moving the consent agenda minus 9A and C. That passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Finley absent.
It is Resolution 2013-26 regarding flashing yellow arrow signals, and I believe -- oh, Nick Wolfram is here to answer questions.
Councilmember Bagley?
Mr. Wolfram, how are you? So I've got, I just have a couple of questions. So, I mean, the first time when we put them up, I turned left and almost got nailed because I wasn't quite sure how it worked. And then the signs went up. Now I get it. So my question is, are we always going to have signs up? Meaning as we go forward, I mean, the ordinance doesn't address the signs. And so my concern is that, I mean, people who come into Longmont, I mean, we follow the model traffic code. That's kind of a new thing, right? I mean, do other cities do it? I've never seen them before. Yeah, they do, or?
Yes, they do. Excuse me. I was just waiting. Good evening, Mayor Coombs, members of council, Nick Wolfram, Engineering Services Manager with City of Longmont. Actually, Longmont is probably one of the last communities on the front range to install these. I first saw them in Boulder probably about three years ago, and they've been growing since then, not only in Colorado, I've seen them in Wyoming, numerous other states. And they've been proven to be effective as a way of moving traffic efficiently through the intersection as well as safety, and have worked well. We put the signs up. We have discussed that and have not made a decision yet on specifically taking those down. I think we, our intention is to leave them up long enough, but once again, I think it's something that is growing regionally as well as that. And if I could briefly, I think one of the questions and concerns, and we tried to put some information in here about how they work, you know, they come on as a flashing yellow light, which indicates caution, you know, turn when you're clear. That stays there, and one of the things we've heard from people is, well, I won't ever get through there. The reality is, if you stay there and you're in the queue and the time runs out and there hasn't been enough time for you to make that left turn, you will get a green arrow, a solid green arrow at the end of the cycle, which will allow the remaining people to clear through. But most of the time, that isn't actually needed, which allows more people to move through the intersection rather than a standard green arrow which comes on at the beginning of the cycle, holds up all the through traffic while maybe one or two people turn left. This allows that, both those moves to happen simultaneously, but brings on a lagging green, which works very efficiently.
So the, so my question is, in the ordinance, how does the ordinance distinguish between a yellow arrow that says stop, you don't have the right of way, and the yellow arrow that says heads up, you're about ready to get a red arrow?
The, and I'd probably wave this to the city attorney's office, but what you have is, you'll have a flashing yellow, and then you'll have a solid yellow that follows that that says there's about to be a change.
But I guess what I'm saying is that, are there ever yellow arrows that indicate that you do have the right of way?
No. A yellow arrow by any definition, just like the yellow light is, is it's proceed with caution only if you're clear.
Correct. I guess I'm just, I just want to make sure that this is the only instance of a yellow arrow in our traffic code. Are there other instances of a yellow arrow in our traffic code? No?
I'm not able to answer that. I would have to check on that, and if you'd like, we could check on that and get your information for second reading.
My only, my only concern is that there are other, I mean, again, I've only been driving 22 years, but I seem to recall driving around and seeing yellow arrows that mean different things than this. And I just want to make sure that if we have an ordinance talking about the vehicle facing the flashing yellow signal may only proceed with caution, I just want to make sure that our ordinance is distinguished between the different types of yellow arrows. Because yellow, I mean, to a lot of, a lot of people, yellow to me means, you know, yellow light means I'm still okay to go through. You know, flashing yellow arrow means, don't go. So I just want to make sure that you take off the signs, I mean, we could have some problems. Or more importantly, we have an ordinance that, I just don't want to conflict with other ordinances, Eugene. I just want, yeah, I want to make, I don't want to, I want to make sure I win. I don't want to lose, Eugene. What am I going to do to help me win?
Mayor and Council, I would echo Nick's comment that we will go back and confirm. My understanding is, until recently, there were no flashing yellow arrows. There were solid arrows that progressed from the red, yellow, green.
Right, right. So those don't flash?
Those don't flash.
So the key word here is flashing.
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 Flashing is new.
Okay, so that's what I was asked. So we see a flashing yellow, that is the difference.
You do not have the right of way.
Okay, cool. If you could just verify that for second reading, and I will watch out for my flashing yellow arrows. The arrow was not flashing, Your Honor. It was not flashing.
Councilmember Whit?
I was just going to say that in defense of the rest of the state, I was actually in brush and saw a flashing yellow arrow. So it was flashing. It was flashing. But I was going to say, I also remember the solid yellow arrow, but still, it meant, you can go, but you better watch out. So it's always meant, you can go, but you better watch out. I'm pretty sure.
CDOT is, what you saw in brush was probably on a state highway. CDOT is using a lot of those, as most DOTs are, so they're becoming more and more standard.
So I guess I'd better move, is this 9A? I'll move 9A.
All right, let's vote. Brian? Okay. Okay, it passes 6 to 0 with Councilmember Finley absent. Thank you. 9C, that was, yeah.
That was the Quail Commercial Center Annexation. And obviously Dawn is going to answer questions.
Councilmember Levinson?
Yes, I've just got a couple of questions. I am not really in favor of the option that staff has suggested where we would lose $134,000 cash money. So I would like to have a little bit of a discussion around that issue. I also, I look at this maybe a little bit differently, that the parcel that we would be swapping out, when you consider, it may have even a greater value when it's combined with the frontage that exists on, in the ownership that we're swapping it out with. I would think that it would even have greater value, but having an earlier discussion with staff, I know that's probably not something that we could, you know, put into the calculation. The other thing is, I don't really see much value in the city owning parcels C and parcel D, simply because I don't see it adds much, much value for us. And in fact, you know, parcel C, who's going to determine, you know, it's such a small corner, you know, picking up trash that might accumulate and other aspects, especially when the packet information didn't mention whether or not that other corner, the other triangle, that is the other half of the bowtie shape there, if that property is owned by the city at all, then we end up with, you know, not really very much contiguous that's useful to us. So, Mr. Burchett, do you know whether or not that, that triangle there between the parcel C triangle and the parcel D is owned by the city?
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Levinson, the area that is north of the blue line, that is a part of the right of way for Jersey Avenue and Kimbark Avenue. In the original plating, that was right of way that was dedicated to the city. So we do own the portion that would be a triangle between the road and the blue line. That is our property.
Okay. So the one that would make the other half of the bowtie?
Yes, if you looked at it as a bowtie, yes, that's correct.
Yes, okay. You know, I, I'm just not in favor of losing money in the land swap. I think that's just what it comes down to. And knowing how much additional value is added to have that much frontage road on 287 into the gateway of the city, I think that I would like to move option two. And that's my first motion, I guess, that we would agree to the swap with a payment difference to the city of $134,000. And that's, yep, so that's what I want to do, is move option two.
I guess so.
I'm just reiterating what option two is. It would agree to the land swap, however, the city would, would be reimbursed for the full dollar amount total. So we're giving up a parcel worth $415,000 for a parcel that's worth $281,000. And what option two says is that we would be paid that differential of 134. Meaning, you know, we're still struggling with our budget. You know, I could see that the $134,000 would, would allow us to do a couple of things. And I know we're going to have some challenges coming up in the budget. So I'm moving option two.
Okay, I'll second that. Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess my question is, where does the $134,000 come from? We go back, what happens if the person involved in the land swap says, I'm not paying an extra $134,000? So that was what I meant by what modification. We don't dictate that. So my question is, what, what do we tell city staff to do if, I mean, right now, it's a, you know, right, it is just a land swap? But the values are different. So what we're telling? Right, so what we're saying is that we don't want to do it.
Oh, no, we do want to do it, but...
Where does the $134,000 come from?
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you. Right now, we own parcel A, correct?
That's correct.
So that's not gaining any revenue, generating any revenue currently, correct?
Not that I know of.
So if we were to do this land swap, and this is developed, revenue would be generated at this site, once developed? So taxes would be, revenue would be generated and taxes would be coming into the city?
That is my understanding, and Mr. Golden's probably still around to answer that, to confirm it, but that's my understanding.
So I know there's some side conversations going on, so I want to make this clear. So we own site A, that is the frontage, that is generating no revenue, tax revenue, right now, because the city owns it. If we were to do this land swap, yes, at a, at a loss, but it's a land swap where potentially site B could help with parking over at the museum and the rec center, which does have a parking problem. This site is developed, revenue is beginning to generate at site A, which would be the part of the land swap. Revenue is generated at that site, taxes are coming into the city. Sounds like somehow we're going to exceed the 130, I'm sorry, let me make sure I get this correct, $134,000 in the land swap. Seems like almost a reasonable land swap to me, in the end. If you're looking at the present, may not seem maybe the right thing to do, but in the overall, in the law, if you look a little bit further down instead of tomorrow, might be the right thing to do.
Councilmember Somer?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So if Jim is still here, could you answer a question, please? Hey, he put you on the spot, right?
He did.
So I'm sure you've looked at this and dissected the numbers. The return of the $134,000 would take how long for us to recoup?
Mayor Coombs, members of council? I have not looked at this and analyzed anything, so I really couldn't even take a shot at that question.
But once, once the land is annexed into the city, the tax value on that land would increase drastically, right?
I would assume it would go up drastically.
Well, compared to have it, compared it being agricultural, whatever it's.
I understand. It would go up, yes.
Yeah. And then they would have to put sewer lines and water lines and stuff like that, where they would have to pay those fees?
They would put those in, they would.
Okay, so in order to develop, they would have to do that? So could you, at some point, just get back to us and let us know how long it would take to recoup the $134,000 once it's developed and they're paying taxes?
We could look at that, make some assumptions.
Yep, thank you. Yep, thank you.
I have a question for you, Harold. You know, anytime I go to a museum function, particularly when the rec center is going full bore, there just really seems to be, even with the extended parking warrant, a parking problem down there. And if we didn't swap it and we just kept the land where it is, then our parking expansion is parking A. So, that doesn't seem like it's very workable unless that's part of our health and wellness that we want people to watch for, from where they park.
Correct, so if you look at the location of the land, yeah, and you look at the master plan for the Quail campus, B does fit into that overall master plan for, or for the entire campus, including the rec center, in terms of the long-term vision for that location. Was that your question?
Right.
Okay.
But A makes our citizens healthier by walking on further.
It does.
Thank you. Councilmember Levinson?
Actually, I mean, the point, the point I'm trying to make is that, you know, the other, the other issue is the fact that that frontage road, parcel A that we have, combined with, it's almost, I'm sort of measuring out, it's a quarter, adding a quarter to that frontage on Main Street, I think, you know, we couldn't have the appraiser take a look at that because, you know, that property is not incorporated. But I think it, it even adds a greater value than what it is right now, because as a parcel right now, A is probably not the amount of square footage that would support a kind of a super development of a hotel or something else, but added, or the other parcel without A couldn't support that. So, the development possibilities are much higher. But also, I really feel it's in the public interest to safeguard our treasury. And, you know, are we going to set a precedent by saying, you know, we think that it's going to make more money in the future, but you know what, straight up, if you were, if somebody was trying to sell your land in adjacent and you didn't see that much of a greater value, then would you lose $134,000? And to me, you know, I think that having, we just have to work a little bit for the fiscal bottom line here. And I understand what happens when a property comes into annexation, but we don't, we don't live off of property tax, we live off of sales tax. So, it'll increase the cop or sum, but percentage-wise, property tax is not how we, we fund our, our budget the most heavily. So, I'm just, I'm just throwing it out there, and just seeing if we can't have staff go back to the drawing board and see if we can't get a fair equity of swapping a larger property for a smaller one and get the full value of our property. I mean, I understand the arguments around, you know, getting something developed, but I think that we do have to watch out for that bottom line, for our citizens. So, and I think if this was a pretty normal business transaction, you know, other people would, private parties would drive as a stronger bargain, if you will. So, I still would like to see if we can't have that little bit of cash.
Councilmember Bagley?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Dawn, you are, you were the guy handling negotiations, right, et cetera? So, I guess my question is, what, the reason I asked about the $134,000 before, the motion as it stands on the table, my understanding is that we have approved the annex, if we approve the annexation, the annexation agreement, the zoning concept plan, and land use amendment with modifications, essentially what we're doing is what Councilmember Levinson said, which was, we're just saying, "No, you got to go back and renegotiate, and we don't think the price is fair." Right, but, but the $134,000 would have to come from the current owner to make it fair. Right, no, no, I get it, I'm with you. You know, what I'm, just what I'm saying, though, is that through our motion, we can't make a property owner give up 134 grand. If they were to do that. Correct. It says just with modifications. Right, so by, so you've been working with these people. Here my question, looking back at the negotiations. My question is, why is the size of plot B the way it is? Why didn't we make it bigger so that it was an equal value of land? I'm guessing there's, there's an answer to that.
Mayor Coombs, Councilmember Bagley, the, we tried to follow the master plan for the Quail campus as far as the layout for, which is included in your packet with the maps, that showed generally the layout and where the parking area in the street would go that needs to come off of Main Street from the west and come into the property. And so, we had identified that at referral when we brought it back to the council originally to see if they were interested in considering it. And we asked at that time, "Do you want acreage, or do you want dollar for dollar?" And what we got back was dollar for dollar. Now, there were many ways that we thought you could look at dollar for dollar. Our initial negotiation was, after getting the appraisal, was to talk to the applicant and say, "We see $134,000 difference here in the, in the appraisal." So, one option is that we do a swap of A and B, and with that, you're going to pay us $134,000. Not to speak for the applicant, because they're here, but in general, my takeaway was, it wasn't doable for them at that price because of the other reimbursements that are owed, that are spelled out in the council comm, that talk about how much is owed on the other parcels in our table that we give you with the map. So, for example, if they kept parcels C and D, when they develop that property south of the greenway, we would collect the monies for the areas to the north. So, that would cost them roughly $110,000 additional cost. So, they were looking at that number, plus they were looking at the difference in the value of the, of the 134. And then by acquiring parcel A, they also then would have to pay back the reimbursements for the $106,000 that are on parcel A, that are, that are owed back to the city for infrastructure that was put in on Quail Road. So, there, they, they asked us to consider, could we add additional, try to add additional value? In other words, could we give you these other parcels of land, C and D, and could you look at it and say that if we don't develop this, and this parcel just sits here, the city and the developers that are owed this money will never get it back? Because if, if this parcel isn't developed, then you're not going to get us to pay back the fees for the infrastructure. And we said, "We understand that there is value there. There is money that's coming back." For example, just in parcel A, parcel A stays with the city. When we do a, a public project on there, we typically, my understanding, is that we don't always make a, one fund pay another fund back for money for infrastructure that was put in the ground. So, that's money that we kind of wash between funds, so to speak, but if this is given or sold to another per party, they would have to pay back that $106,000. So, it was asked of us to consider it. We looked at it, and we thought it was another option for council to consider. But there are any number of ways you could look at this. As many as you are sitting there at this counter, you could all come up with probably a different way to do this. But we identified three. One was, take it and give them credit and assume some of the things that were talked about tonight, that there are monies coming back into the general fund, that would not, plus we're getting additional monies from land that is going to be taxed differently. The other option was to say, you know what, you could do the, the swap and ask for the money. And if they don't want to do the swap and pay that money, then they could not agree to the annexation agreement with that term, and then they could say, "We just want to be annexed." Another way is that you could just say, "We're not interested in doing the land swap. Do you just want to be annexed?" And you could put the parcel up for sale if you wanted to, as the council, and see if you can get the $400,000 for it. There's many options. We, again, we tried to spell out what we saw was our initial starting point of, this is what the appraisal said, this is what the money said that should be kind of swapped back and forth. Then we said, "Okay, understanding your financial restrictions, is there another way? This was the other way." And these are all up to council to choose, that's why we're not making a recommendation. We have written the annexation agreement in this manner, because this was the hardest one to come up with, honestly. Because of all, as you saw, there are, if we request the trade, if they request it, who does what, when are things done? So, we wanted to make sure that this was really hammered out well, so that if this is the option that you choose, you don't have to try and tell us what to do on how to make it work. We figured, we think we figured it out.
Can I ask you a question?
I'm sorry, yes.
That's all right, thank you. I guess my question is, okay, if annexation, if annexation is a discretionary act and therefore a policy decision, okay, granted, let's assume for a second that I'm one of seven and I want to vote for annexation. What, in your expert opinion, what allows us to annex this property, but at the same time maximize the city's value for what we're doing? I don't understand the annexation process enough and the area enough to be able to give you guidance. So, I'm sitting here thinking, you have to think it's in the city's best interest, or else you wouldn't be here asking us to annex it in. So, okay, you win on that one, okay, got it, we're going to annex it in, I got it. But my question is, if we're going to annex it in, we don't, I don't necessarily want to vote on the current motion and say, "Well, no, we're not annexing it in, go get us $134, then we'll annex it in." Right. What I want to know is, after having worked with these people, knowing what the city needs, knowing what's coming up, and knowing the area, knowing that we want to annex it in, what do we need to do, what direction do we give you that says, "Annex it in, but go maximize the city's dollars?" What, what do I need to say to have the city do that?
So, so let me first just say that I believe that there is a benefit to the property owner by coming into the city limits. In Boulder County, they are restricted in what they can or cannot do, to what level I don't know, but I know that they are restricted more than they would be if they came into the city. I think there is a benefit to their, to them for coming in. Now, they do increase their property taxes, and they are subject to our rules and regulations, but there is an ability then to develop this property, in my mind, probably to a higher level maybe than is allowed in Boulder County. But I, I don't know Boulder County regulations well enough, and Barbisaire, she could probably give you that. There is a benefit to us in that we would gain additional property that is going to be zoned commercial, that is going to have property tax that we are going to collect on it. I don't know what the difference is, but, but obviously that is. To look at it, right now, everybody who drives by there assumes that's a part of the city of Longmont anyway. So, we would get that in. Another thing that's in this annexation agreement is that we are getting rid of the remainder of those billboards that are out there. We currently have none in the city of Longmont. As directed by the council, we put in a five-year term that says that they can keep them up for five years after annexation, so that they can recoup some of their, their money on that. So, there's a benefit to us of that, that billboard will ultimately go away, which, again, is seen by many as a, as a, as an improvement and a benefit. But what council first needs to decide is, do you want to annex it? And if the answer is yes, so that, that's your first question, and I, and I don't think that anybody's saying, "No, don't answer it," so that's an easy one. So, then the question is, do you feel that there needs to be additional monies for this land or not? Okay, that, to me, that's the second question. If you think that option one, that we have in the annexation agreement is a fair way to look at it, you just need to vote on it the way it is. If you believe that we should go with option two, that says they should pay us an additional amount, we can do that. We could, we could do it where they have to bring it to us at annexation, or we could do like we've structured this agreement already for the other payments, which is at time of development or at time of the actual swap itself. We have agreed in principle to do it, but we want you to do these other things before we give you the paperwork. Or if we request it, you don't have to do things until you're ready for development, or maybe it's phased in. You could give us any kind of direction on that. That's what we would need from you, is, do you want to annex it? And if, and if you'd like one option or the other, pick one. And then if you want to modify it in that you think that we should get $134,000, tell us when you want it. Do you want it, it's got to be at time of annexation, or can it be over development of the property? Could it be, you know, as every acre is assigned a percentage of that money and we get a payment? Every time they do a percentage of development on that property, we get a percentage of that payment. There's many different ways you could set it up. Or you could decide, again, we want to annex you, we want it under our terms, if you can't meet those, then we're going to put A up for sale and see what we can get for it, and then we'd like to negotiate with parcel B. I mean, there's 100 different ways we could do this.
I guess, I guess, I guess, and then I'm going to click after this, the, if we can, if the value, I would like to see the $134,000 come in when they can pay it, if it's out there. I mean, that, that, that would be good monetary policy for the city. So, is that, is that an option?
I'm sorry, I missed the very first part.
I said, I would like, if it's possible, that we're leaving $134,000 on the table, regardless of when it comes in, if that's available, I do think it's probably good monetary policy to say, "Let's go get it." And so, that's kind of, I'd, I'd be up for that.
Dawn, I, to clarify something, okay, there's a $134,000 difference, but there's also this $106,000 reimbursement that's currently owed when it's built. So, if we did something that killed the, I mean, if the development went through, then the difference really isn't the 134, it's the 134 minus the 106 that we would get anyway. Is that correct, or am I?
So, I, what I, and I put a little footnote down below the chart with the parcels A, B, C, and D, and it's number one, and it says, "The appraised value of each parcel reflects the cost of reimbursements that are owed for each parcel." So, the appraisal, we gave the appraiser all of these numbers, and they adjusted all of the values based on what was owed back. That's why parcels C and D, for example, are assessed at zero because of the amounts of money that are owed in reimbursements compared to the value of the land. And their, and their appraisal was, there's no value there. And our 415 is also less than it would have been if there were no amounts owed on it. So, so it's not truly saying that there's, that the 134 isn't, but the thing to keep in mind that we've talked about is that if the city kept parcel A, we would not get that $106,000 back to some of our funds if it was developed as a city project.
Councilmember Samori?
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. So, another benefit that wasn't mentioned, that's a benefit to the city, is that when that land is annexed, we get water rights with it, right?
That's, yes.
Three acre feet per acre foot of land?
And maybe more.
And maybe more. So, and that water, based on recent valuation, is about $19,000 an acre foot?
16? It's changing.
Okay, so how many, how many acre feet of water are we getting?
I'm going to let Dale answer that question.
Go ahead, Harold. So, Mayor, council, I think, when you...
Go ahead, Dale, and then I'll jump in. Mayor Coombs and members of council, and Councilmember Samori answered the question. I don't know the exact acre feet here tonight. What I do know, I'm talking to the representative of the owners, that I believe it's the Beckwith Water Right, one of the oldest water rights in the city, on the river, and that they likely have water sufficient to meet the policy. But again, I don't have those calcs in front of me, but it is a, a good water right that would be valuable to us.
And then the other benefit that we're going to be getting as a city is the use of the additional parking that they're going to be building, right, for overflow?
That's correct.
And how many spaces are going to be built there?
It would be an assumption based on the concept plan. It would be an assumption based on the concept plan, um...
About 80? 80 parking spaces. If the city were to build 80 parking spaces itself, what would it cost us?
I'm gonna call up my next, doesn't need a hitter for that one.
That actually depends on where and how much the property was gonna cost. Dale, do you have an idea?
Give me an estimate.
Nick sending a text right now to figure it out.
He's sending a text. I think what we're also trying to do is, is we're looking at two different numbers here because we can run some numbers to give you an idea in terms of what that difference is going to look like, because, um, in, in some of these assumptions, if you assume that the property stays as is, and, and nothing happens, then the mayor was correct in the sense that there's 106,000 that is on that property that we will not recuperate until we sell it, um, because of past practices and some of those, and, and how we handle that situation. The other side is, is if you assume that it's developed, then if, if you want to look at that number, then you have to look in terms of what are the entitlement fees that are gonna be generated by that property, in terms of, um, what do we pay for the water connections, the wastewater fees, um, so on and so forth. And so we would have to work those numbers to say, okay, this is what's gonna come in in terms of entitlement, this is, this is how it's gonna hit the different funds, that's one component of it. The other component of that is that you would then have to look at, is there a property tax component? And granted, that's not, you know, significant dollars, but it's, it's a component nonetheless. And then you would need to look at what the plan was for the property, say, kind of what we did with the mall when we said, here's what's going in, and here's the estimate that we look in terms of, of the, the return. And we'd have to put that together, and then we would have to compare it against the margin that exists if the property stays as is. Again, you're, you're making another assumption that we're, nothing's happening with that property. If you wanted to look at those two and kind of say, here's what it looks like to the best of our ability in making that comparison.
So, excuse me, Nick, so that 80 spaces would be approximately 100,000 dollars, not counting land costs. Okay. And then how many acres is the land that we're talking about altogether, to be annexed? 11.7. So they would have to give us roughly 33 acres of water, just for simple math. For simple math that I could do, like, pull that one off? Well, I'm using information. And if we just average at 10,000 dollars an acre foot of water, not the 15 or 16,000, that's 330,000 dollars of water that the city would be getting, if it was one, you know, three to one. Correct. So between the water rights that we'd get and the parking spaces that we would benefit from, I think they more than make up for the 134,000 dollars that we may be giving up.
Councilmember Santos?
Thank you for that fast math. Councilmember Samori. Um, C and D, oh, and let me get, get something square. I, I went up to ask Jim, the city does get property tax, so, well, I mean, unless Councilmember Levison, you'd like to make a motion to have Boulder County not send us the check, we can make that, you can make that motion in just a little bit, but we do receive property taxes from Boulder County. So let's, let's get that straight. We've been on, on council just about six years, we would, we need to understand exactly where we get our funding from, sales tax and property tax. So we do get revenue from property tax. So let's get that, let's get that clear. So if we were to make this swap, pro, uh, property A would generate property tax for the city. Um, so, but you want to make that motion and have Jim tell Boulder County, stop, don't send us the check, we can do that. Um, so, I just want to make it clear, I'm sorry?
It would take four votes.
It would take four votes, and I don't think she'd get it, but I mean, but just to make it clear that we do get property tax, I mean, that does come to the city, she said we didn't get property tax. But we, but we, you know, and I, you know, and, and you, as you like to say, I have four when other people are talking, so let's not interrupt. Um, so what value do, would we get with C and D? I, I'd like to know. So they're, they're proposing throwing in C and D, what, what benefit do we get from that?
Mayor Coombs. Councilmember Santos, in the annexation agreement, under pages 26...
I read it, but, you know, just for those that are...
What we've outlined would be the, the payments that would come back to the city. In parcel C, the way that the annexation agreement is written is that we would get 52,558 dollars, some cents, based on the current adjustment factor that we use for reimbursement. Parcel D, we would get back approximately 3,062 dollars.
Uh, Don, let me ask you, how does that benefit us along that stretch of the, uh, the river?
So, that would be additional area that would be added to the greenway. Um, the applicants proposing to remove the prairie dogs on that site for us when they give it to us, and then meet city standards for design, and any modification that need to happen. And so that would add that to us. Um, it would also potentially remove some areas that would be, most likely need variances for any kind of development to occur if they were to remain for development.
So it allows us a little bit more green space in that, in, uh, in an area where we have done some modification with a new bridge, it's there. Um, opens that up for a little bit more wildlife habitat, preparing area as well. So, C and D with, you know, if you add it to B, again, I, I, I don't see where, you know, with, with the fees that are gonna have to come in and everything else, I, I see the word, and in the end, we're gonna come out ahead. Does it look like that? If you look at it in the present, no, but if you look down the long run, you know, we're gonna be making a little bit more on, on, on this than, you know, Councilmember Levison's making this out to be, in, in my view. So, you know, it sounds like we're talking in circles, so un, unless we're gonna vote on the motion, you know, I move the previous motion. Do I have a second?
Well, don't, there's already a motion.
Yeah, well, and, and I think that I...
Move the previous question. I have a second, then it's all debate.
I, I have the mic, so.
All right. I have a second.
You're right. That's right. Okay, let's vote.
Does it end all debate?
Yes, it does.
Move the question needs to be approved by a two-third majority.
Go ahead. Council president.
I ju, I actually just had one more question that I didn't understand the annexation agreement.
I have a second.
So.
We have to vote on...
Thank you.
Okay, it passes, um, 42, with councilmembers Bagley and Levison descending, and councilmember Finley absent.
Two-thirds, the president, that's two-thirds. That's exactly, exactly two-thirds.
So, it's, it is exactly two-thirds, yeah.
What, two-thirds or two-thirds?
I'm Googling it right now.
Fine practice.
If lessons...
I got research, while you do your research.
The motion is approved.
Okay. Okay, let's, let's vote on the motion. So the, the motion was to ask for the 134,000 and annex the property, so. That's, but... Okay, the motion fails, uh, with, uh, councilmember Bagley, Santos, Coombs, Wit, and Samori voting against it, and councilmember Finley absent.
Councilmember Bagley? Thank you, Mayor Coombs. I guess what I'd like to see is that we don't vote on this. What worries me is that we're having a discussion on math, and, uh, if I were teaching up at the university, I would say, we shouldn't be having a debate on math. What I think we should do is have city staff come back with their recommendation, after looking at all the different math, and saying, this is what we think is a fair way to proceed, given that city council wants to annex this property. Cause right now, that's all we've done, is talk about, well, I think the water rights are worth this, and I think C and D is worth this, and there's numbers, so we just need to see it put together on a spreadsheet in such a way that when it adds up, we go, okay, that makes sense, instead of voting on an option that basically just says, we really don't understand the math. I don't understand the math, and I'd like it put out in such a way before I vote that I understand the math. So I think that's why I'm having a problem understanding.
You know, this is, it requires two readings, and, and, and so one option the council has is that you could, uh, vote on it today. Uh, the one thing that we have heard, I think, from all the council members is that you want to be in the black, as we have this discussion on this property.
Yeah.
And so, what we can do is, is we can bring that information back where it provides that comparison that you, that you're asking for, based on what we've heard, uh, for the second reading.
That's what I'd like. I would move that we give them that direction and then deal with it next time. I wouldn't, I, I mean, voting on option one, option two, option five, doesn't matter, I want to see the math before I vote.
Councilmember Whit?
Thank you, Mayor. And what I was gonna say is, let's, I would move option one, with the, the, obviously, people want to see more math, and we'll get that at second reading. Um, as for making sure that we're in the black, I think this is a pretty complex issue, and, if, if we're 72 cents in the red, I don't care. What I want to see is that I want to see a nice development on the entrance corridor to our city, and this is what this is, is, it's gonna be a great project, it's gonna bring tax revenue, and it's gonna, uh, make an area of our city look nicer than it is now. So, if, if we take a little bit of a hit, it's not gonna kill me. So, um, I move option one.
Okay, um...
I already mentioned that.
With the math, option one of that. You know, I, um, I like the idea of getting more land along our corridor, um, I think that's always, you know, a good thing. I like the idea of getting a parking a lot closer to the museum, a lot of people go to the museum, our older folks, they don't want to walk a long ways, um, I, I like the idea of getting, uh, you know, some development along the corridor where we're gonna get tax money from, and I like the idea of bringing in, um, all that acre feet of, of water. So I think there's a lot of, uh, positive things about option one, and I do agree with Brian that this math is pretty confusing, but Alex did it on the fly for us, but, but it doesn't seem like a bad deal to me to push option one forward, um, tonight, so I'm gonna support that. Councilmember Levison?
Yes, one thing that I would like to also see is some clarification around the shared parking, because, you know, as we've seen, um, in the recent past, future councils can change annexation agreements if there's a request by someone saying, you know, something in the original annexation agreement is too onerous. And so I don't think we can peg the value of shared parking that, um, says that we're going to put a formalized agreement. If it's going to be a hotel, um, most hotels have their, their heaviest use of the parking lot in the evening, when everybody, the heads are in the beds. So to assume that the night we might have, um, an event at the rec center, an event at the museum, that we would actually have access to even 10 parking spaces that are gonna be roped off and say, these are now for use for the city, to me, you know, we can't put that as part of the dollar value in the deal, because that's all subject to change, in my opinion. Um, and, you know, we have changed annexation agreements, you know, 10, 15 years down the road. So, the other question I also wanted to know is, um, is that enough land that we're getting near the open space corridor? Having the second side of the bowtie, it looks like there's very little land that we could have to, to do anything with, as far as, you know, putting some kind of, you know, scenic platform to overlook, or to have a place for someone to sit, or anything. I want to make sure if we're really putting that kind of value, because it has value to the city as open space, that it really does have that true value, because there's enough of it that adds to what we already have to make it useful. And, you know, I don't know how much feet we're talking about, that's the other thing, I can't tell whether or not there's, um, just from the math, enough there, and I don't know if we've, uh, gone out, I, I guess I'll just have to take a drive and go out and look at it myself, but I would like clarification around the shared parking idea, too. And, um, you know, it's fine if we want to put a dollar value on it, um, I guess we could use some number that we came up with for the Roosevelt Park Apartments, about what shared value on parking means. That's structured parking, that's different, but, um, we actually have a firm agreement in that, to use the, or LDDA does, in paying rent. But if we're not going to exchange money, there, you know, and the, when the facility is the most busy, might be when we have a need for parking, and then we won't, that really becomes irrelevant as far as the value added for us. So I just want to throw that out as a caution.
All right, let's vote. Okay, that passes 6 to 0, with councilmember Finley, uh, absent.
Thank you.
Mayor Coombs? Last item on your agenda is, um, the Conservation Trust Fund Public Process Summary. Paula Fitzgerald is here to make this presentation.
Um, I'm your project manager from Parks and Open, um, Public Works and Natural Resources. Where am I? So I will try to make this brief, I know it's been a long night for you. What we wanted to do this evening is bring some information to you, um, on the Conservation Trust Fund. This is one of the important funds that you have, um, at your disposal to look at various , uh, cap projects throughout the city. Uh, the Parks and Rec Advisory Board requested staff to bring information back on the Conservation Trust Fund and its policies back in April of 2010, uh, knowing that at that time, we were about five years from completing the St. Rain Greenway, they felt it was important to understand possible future uses. They felt it was important to understand possible future uses and then the public's support for those potential uses. So with that, staff conducted a wide-ranging public process beginning in November of 2011 and concluding in May of last year, 2012. You have a summary of that public process in your packet. So, we put together a survey. Let's see. There we go. Yes, thank you. A survey we put together that was used in a variety of venues to better understand where the community stood on the future use of conservation trust funds. So, we provided some background information in the survey and when the, where the Conservation Trust Fund began and how it was funded, which was through Colorado State statutes and Colorado lottery revenue. As council is aware, our Longmont Conservation Trust Fund comes from our pro-rata share of lottery revenues. The Colorado Constitution gave guidance as to where these funds could be used, such as for state and local parks, for recreation facilities, for open space, environmental education, and wildlife habitats. And also, the split of lottery funds between Great Outdoors Colorado, who gets 50% of these funds for grant programs, of which Longmont has been very lucky in getting many of those awards, and then also local governments such as Longmont. And then finally, 10% goes to state parks. We also educated the public on allowable uses of conservation trust funds. So there's four general categories of use. And we tried to limit the discussion to categories of use rather than specific projects to keep the discussion on a very large overview basis. So, the first of those four categories is the purchase of land and water. Those purchases can be used for open space, agricultural lands, or recreation purposes, just to name a few. And that list can include conservation trust fund purchases for things like community and recreation centers, libraries and museums, golf courses, parks and open space areas, among others. The Conservation Trust Fund can also be used for new development. So this is the second category. New development is of structures and buildings, shelters and pavilions, sports courts and sports fields, restrooms, pathways, trails, parking and playgrounds. Can also, the third category, is for maintenance. But the maintenance is limited to those areas previously improved using conservation trust funds. So currently, since Longmont has basically only used conservation trust fund monies for the St. Rain Greenway, this category of funding could only be used to help maintain the St. Rain Greenway. And then the final category of use is for capital projects on existing sites. So this category can be used for areas such as playground equipment and resurfacing, site amenities, and ADA or Americans with Disabilities Act compliance work, among others. So, the Conservation Trust Fund has been used in Longmont exclusively, again, for the St. Rain Greenway. We had a newly adopted master plan back in 1993, right about the same time as the Colorado Constitution Amendment clarifying eligible uses. Staff has found no formal written policies restricting funds to this project. But by earmarking it to a single effort, it has allowed for the completion of eight miles of trail corridor, along with five district parks and trailheads along that route. The Pavlacus Open Space Property is also currently in design, which is, will be yet another district park and trailhead project in central Longmont utilizing those funds. We're also currently working on the final two phases of the trail, which Phase 12 will run from Golden Ponds out to Pella Crossing in the town of Hygiene. We're working on that project in conjunction with Boulder County. And this will be Longmont's final westward trail extension of the project. Phase 13 will extend the trail from Sandstone Ranch to St. Rain State Park. So this phase will be our absolute final phase of the St. Rain in Longmont. Boulder County, state parks, Weld County, and Firestone are all working on their plans to extend the trail from where Longmont leaves off and into and through their properties and jurisdictions. As council is aware, the St. Rain is not just a local trail, and it's not just a regional trail. It's also part of the Colorado Front Range Trail Plan, which is a statewide trail planning document. So having this dedicated funding has helped realize this community vision. So it's really a good time to think about what's next. So as mentioned before, we developed a public process to help understand where Longmont residents stood on the possible future uses of conservation trust funds. So we utilized three main strategies to solicit public feedback. We used Option Power, which is a tool I think you're all familiar with. And we used that at 14 different board and public meetings. We also used a web survey that was conducted in both English and Spanish. And we also had paper surveys at the rec centers and various public buildings, such as the library and senior center. So what are the results of that process? We found that we were able to get feedback from a good cross-section of the community by both age and gender. We were also reasonably close to matching Longmont's race and ethnicity demographics. And we had a good representation of the entire community from a geographic basis. So what were our results? There was strong support for using conservation trust funds for purchase of land and water. And of those purchases, pathways and trails were the most strongly supported land and water purchase type, followed by community and recreation centers or pools. And then a split between easements and libraries and museums. There was also good support for parks and open space areas, followed by fairgrounds and campgrounds, which were split in support with skate parks and skating rinks. Shooting ranges came in with 6% support, and golf courses for 4% of support. And again, this is in the land and water purchase category. Of the second category of allowable uses, which is development of new sites, there was a pretty even split of support among the various project types, being pathways and trails, park structures and buildings, which was very close to playgrounds. And then libraries and museums and rec centers and pools had equal support. And again, with an even split of support for waterfront amenities, sports courts and sport fields. Parking had the smallest level of support at 5%. Maintenance, the third category of use, was highly supported. Oops, there it is. With the highest favor towards maintenance of parks and trails. Recreation facilities was next, followed by an even split of support towards landscape upkeep and staff salaries. In the fourth category, capital projects, there was also strong support for this use of those surveyed. Again, this category is for renewal or revitalization upgrades to existing sites. And of the possible capital project types, the categories, we had found the highest support towards recreation facility improvements, followed closely by playground equipment and resurfacing, and then closely followed by libraries and museums. The next project categories in order support were ADA compliance, site amenities, new master plans, pool indoor maintenance equipment, and golf upgrades. Of all the four categories of allowable use, support was fairly close as split, from 20% to 29% in favor. So in order of preference, it was development projects, land and water purchase, capital projects, and then lastly, maintenance. So the Conservation Trust Fund has averaged just over $800,000 each year in funding for the past five years. This amount varies each year. This year, I think it's going to be a little high, which is great. As council is considering potential funding sources of the many worthy projects that have come before you, the Conservation Trust Fund is an important funding source. Although it has restrictions to its use, it's also widely enough balanced to include many of the parks, open space, golf, and community service projects that you look at every year. So you'll be considering the Parks, Recreation, and Trails Master Plan in the coming month. And the Park Improvement Fund will also be considered for adjustments. So hopefully, this information on the Conservation Trust Fund will be of use to you in your decisions ahead related to these important projects. And with that, if there's any questions, I'd be happy to answer them. And Jeff Friesner also is here, who worked with me on the public process.
Councilmember Bagley. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Good job. Thank you very much for this information. So I just want to, am I understanding you correctly that, so if we have a park, Roosevelt Park, if, so we cannot use these funds to maintain that park? Because it was not built with these funds. But we can use the funds to build a new park and then continue to maintain that park? Is that correct?
I, so what happens is when you develop, it's called a conservation site. Now, there may be a certain level of improvement. So maybe there's a major upgrade to a park, and that would put it into the category of a conservation site. So we may need to explore that a little bit more with the lottery folks and the people administering this fund to make sure that, you know, what is that level that would then allow maintenance to be utilized? But generally, yes, it has to be a conservation site before you can use the money for maintenance.
Okay, thank you. I just want to point out that water park and pool is totally wanted by the citizens of this community. Just want to point that out, 64.2%. And then, but the other thing is, we've been talking, I mean, we've been talking all along, at least for the last year and three months that I've been on council, that one of the problems we have is that we spend money on, you know, we spend, we have reoccurring expenses, but we use one-time funding. So my question is, I mean, I really think it was valuable that the community solicited this input, it will be used. But my question is, how much money can we suck out of the budget and use to pay off that non-permitted uses? And then use this money to replace that money? So somehow, can we use this $800,000 to get rid of, like, the parks fees that we charge developers that we will no longer have, even if we keep it, but once all our land uses is built out? So my question is, have we looked at that?
So, two different discussions, because one, when you look at the parks fees, that's for capital improvements. And so that really falls into those one-time funding and that one-time funding component. But if you remember, I think the number last year was $550,000 that we had in ongoing expenses utilizing one-time funds. And that was lower than the budget process last year, too. I want to say somewhere in the neighborhood of $200,000, plus or minus a little bit. So we have that piece to work on this year. Depending on the projects that we've used, this funding source for, to create, you could potentially grab the operating expense associated with those projects and use this money to come in and handle it from an O and M perspective. Is that correct, Paula?
Again, if it's a conservation site.
If it's a conservation site, you can do that, so we can do it. But I would also say to the council, remember that when we look at the overall O and M requirements that we're seeing in our parks in general, we've got gaps there that we need to deal with.
What's the gap? We could use all $800,000. What's the gap?
That's what we're going to, that's what we're talking about right now, as we're going through the master planning process, and that will be included in that information. That's part of what we're looking at, so we'll be able to give you that.
I would like a water park and swimming pool. But because I know that Mayor Potem Santos will chastise me, I would like, I think it would be a good idea to have staff look and see how we can take that $800,000 and solve our, solve some of our fiscal woes, rather than spending all our money right now. But don't you want that trail to go to? No, we built the trail, the trail, we finished the trails. But we're not building a trail in Boulder. Sorry, Mayor.
Again, this is all part of the master plan discussion, and we will provide you with that information. And we, based on the feedback we get from tonight, we can include that in the presentation.
So Paula, I'm sorry, Mayor.
Councilmember Levison.
Thank you, Mayor. So Paula, projects that I know we've used GOCO money to build, like Sandstone Ranch. So we could take, if we, you know, Jeff probably knows this off the top of his head, but I'm not even going to guess. Say, for example, you know, X, X dollars to maintain the ball fields and everything that was built with, bless you, GOCO money. We could use a portion of that $800,000 to continue to do the maintenance. And would it also pay for replacement structures? For example, when the shelters deteriorate or we have to redo the ball fields, would it pay for that sort of stuff?
So, we have two parks at Sandstone Ranch. We have the district park and the community park. The community park was paid for out of park improvement funds. So the ball fields are in the community park. So, no, it is not a conservation site. Now, the district park was paid for out of Conservation Trust Fund. It is a conservation site. And the other part about the district park, so GOCO is the competed-for grant. Lottery is the money we get distributed every year. So we're really talking about lottery funds in the Conservation Trust Fund. We will continue to apply for GOCO grants. I'm sure as the projects become appropriate for that. But we also have a GOCO grant on the district park at Sandstone Ranch. So we're kind of doubly endowed out there with this funding source. So we could use it for anything at the district park site, anything on the St. Rain Greenway, anything in any other park site in town. For instance, we have Kensington Park, Collier Park, Alta Park. I'm probably forgetting one right now. But that all have revitalization master plans that have been put in place and only partially completed. And some of those plans barely partially completed. So those aren't conservation sites, but that's where the capital project money could fall in, where we could complete revitalization projects. We could also do, we have the 2010 ADA that is hitting parks and recreation sites very hard. And staff has been working on looking at all the costs and all the projects that we'll need to be doing over the next several years to bring our facilities up to meet ADA. And those are also eligible under the capital projects portion category of funding. So those are pretty huge.
So I remember specifically that when we were looking at our capital program last year during budget process, we always seemed to have this item about rehabilitation of playground or replacement of playground equipment, which we struggle with so mightily. So the lottery funds could use, for example, I don't think we use them for replacement of the Collier Park playground equipment, but we could have. Is that what you're saying?
That's correct.
Okay. So we can, in answer to Councilmember Bagley's question, we can cost shift some of the stuff that we've been looking at in the CIP.
I prefer financial shenanigans.
Okay, thank you. And in regards to Dry Creek, if there was an outdoor swimming facility built, we could use part of the lottery funds to do that, even though we have, we have GOCO money that we've received to help develop phasing of that park as well. And then in the future, we could devote, I mean, $800,000 is not going to build that swimming pool. We sort of know that, even if we wanted to blow it every year, we couldn't really. Oh, yeah, okay. You'll dig the ditch yourself. But I'm thinking that having every couple of years this community reflection about how we can use various funds to help balance things in the capital program, I think is quite useful. I guess I just wish the numbers would have been even higher with the amount of participation we had, because it looks like, you know, 500, most of the number, it was around 500 people. It would have been nice to have, like, 1,000 or 2,000. But I think the first level, I think this is great to get the input and to have the information.
Councilmembers, smart.
Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Paula, thank you for the presentation. And I have a question for Councilwoman Bagley. Speaking of shenanigans, how many times did you fill out the survey to request the pool?
Well, thank you, Paula. I don't see any further questions. That was a good presentation. Thanks for your hard work. So, next is time for final call. Public invited to be here, is there anyone who would like? Is there anyone who would like to speak in public at this time?
Our bunk, 105 South Sunset. Two things. We're looking forward to talking to at the public hearing about the Quail Commercial Center annexation, so we'll be back with our numbers and our math in order, so we'll be get that together. And I participated in the process with Paula, and as always, it was a great process. It was it was good communication, and I think it the presentation really accurately reflects the dialogue that went on in the public, and so I would like to commend her. My two cents, good night.
Thank you. Is there anybody else who'd like to address the council? Sing, no one? I'll close the public hearing. Now, it's time for, or I mean, the final call, public invited to be heard. It's been a long night. It's been a long day. It's time for mayor and council comments. Councilmember Smiley.
Okay, I'm getting my second wind. So, Bobby King isn't here tonight, but Bobby, if you're, if you're if you're still awake at home and watching, I know that now that you're older, you might not be. He has a birthday this week, and just because you're not here doesn't mean that you get away with it. In two weeks, we're going to get you.
So, in anticipation of our not having a meeting next week, I just wanted to let people know where we were going to be. Several of us are going to be attending the Colorado Municipal League Annual Conference in Vail, and I just want to lay it out there, it is not a good doggo. Not a junket. We work. We work really hard, and it's a great opportunity that we have only once a year to have, most cities send one to two to three to four to five people. Some cities have their entire councils and several support staff members there. It's a great time for us to do a lot of learning around state issues, especially getting additional updates and analyzation of what happened in the state capital this year and what could happen next year. Getting updates on other critical issues, I imagine, well, I know there's going to be some workshops and breakout sessions on the marijuana regulation issue and and oil and gas and others. So, just want to let people know, I'm going to take an educational class on Tuesday afternoon and then work hard all week to represent the city well and learn as much as I can. So, that's why we're going to be off next week, but that if we're not here, we are still working.
Councilmember Bagley.
I'll be here on Tuesday. Just kidding. Thank you, Mayor Coombs. Mayor's going to be here, won't you? You're going to be here, Mayor.
I'll be here on Tuesday, but I will be out of town for like a Thursday.
Yeah, doesn't matter. You guys are all gone. It's like the city is mine once more. It was awesome. It was awesome, getting rid of all the flashing yellow lights.
Yeah.
The, I guess the, what I want, I don't want to have a discussion, because I have not talked with anybody about this, but the question I have, instead of calling you all individually or playing the game of sunshine sunshine laws, is do we want to reconsider our decision on the well? That is it. You don't need to say yes or no right now, but the question is, you know, there were some articles in the paper, do we want to reconsider? That's it.
You're going to respond, aren't you, Will?
I am going to use discretion and not respond in public. I'll respond privately.
All right, no more council comments. So, I just want to like to remind everybody again to go to the ice cream fundraiser for Callahan House on Sunday, June 23rd, 1 to 4. City manager, any additional remarks?
No comment, Mayor, council.
All right. City attorney, any remarks?
No comments, Mayor.
Oh, yeah, the airport expo on the 22nd of June. Oh, I think Katie's going to jump out of an airport. Oh, yeah. What happened? All right, this city is adjourned, or this 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 meeting's adjourned.